Welcome to the City Planning's Review Session. We have a lot of important business coming before the Commission today, but there is no more important piece of business than congratulating and celebrating the birthday of Commissioner Orlando Marin. So let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. I didn't expect it, but thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'm sorry that you'll be having to have your birthday chocolate cake at home, but we will, in spirit, be there with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So now over to you, Ryan.
Okay, so this is a welcome to the New York City Planning Commission Review Session on Monday, August 31st, 2020, held via June webinar. The time is 1:02 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a non-Euler referral of a modification of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District 3. Our presenter is Matthew Pietrus.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is an application by Clinton Broom Development LLC for a minor modification to a large-scale residential development. The modification would facilitate the development of two new 100% affordable buildings and improvements to open space at the site. Next slide. The project is located in the Lower East Side neighborhood where the Commission recently approved the Go Broom developments and modifications to an LSRD by HPD. As a reminder, the area is just south of the approach to the Williamsburg Bridge. Tower-on-the-Park-style developments are typical to the east and the south, and tenement buildings are to the west and to the north. Next slide. The project area, which is shown here in orange, has been subject to a number of actions since the 1950s. The Sewer Park Urban Renewal Area was established in 1955 and expanded in 1965. In 1966, the Sewer Park Extension LSRD was created to facilitate various developments in the geography, and from 1968 through 1980, several actions facilitated new buildings in the area. In 2005, the URA expired, and in 2012, the Essex Crossing Large-Scale General Development was created, and a series of actions facilitated development on underutilized parking lots and vacant land, and that area is shown in purple. As the Commission may recall, it approved an application by HPD to split the Sewer Park Extension LSRD into two non-contiguous east and west LSRDs in late 2019. And earlier this year, the Commission approved a series of actions in the west LSRD that will facilitate the development of the Go Broom buildings, and that area is shown in blue. Next slide. Zooming in, we can see that the project area is coterminous with the Sewer Park Extension East LSRD, which is shown in white. The area is generally bound by Delancey Street to the north, Clinton to the west, Grant to the south, and Beale Stoker Place to the east. The large scale contains a mix of uses, including a NYCHA building, the Abrams Performing Arts Center, a senior building, and several residential developments on the subject zoning block. Next slide. In blue, we see that zoning lot. It currently contains six buildings, three 26-story buildings, which each have 200 affordable apartments. These are collectively known as the Grand Street Guild. One building is in the southwest corner of the zoning lot, one in the southeast corner, and one on the mid-block closer to Pitt Street. At the northeast corner of the zoning lot is a refuse building which services these developments. Next slide. In red, we see the proposed location of the two new developments, each of which currently contains a structure. The development site to the left contains a parking structure, and the development site in the center of the screen contains a vacant one-story building which used to contain a community facility use. Both of these structures would be demolished to make way for the proposed developments. Next slide. To facilitate these developments, the applicant seeks approval of a modification to the LSRD to reflect several changes to the site plan. Next slide. The first of these modifications is to merge three parcels to create a new zoning lot. Next slide. This is the site plan of the existing large scale. The development site currently consists of three zoning lots, which are shown here in purple, blue, and orange. Next slide. The proposed modification would combine these three zoning lots into one called Parcel 3, and that proposed zoning lot is shown in red. Next slide. The second modification to the LSRD would reflect several physical changes to the area. The first of these changes would be the addition of the two new proposed buildings that would be constructed upon approval of the application. Next slide. The two new developments would be 100% affordable buildings containing up to 480 apartments. There would also be about 6,000 square feet of community facility space in the building on the mid-block. The massings for the new development are shown here in blue. Next slide. The first building, called Building 3-5, would be on the southeast corner of Broom and Clinton Streets. The development site currently contains a two-story parking structure with about 160 spaces. Of these spaces, about 120 are currently used by the existing residents at the Grand Street Guild. Next slide. On this site, the applicant proposes a new 15-story 100% affordable residential building. The building would contain up to 235 affordable apartments, which are intended mostly for families making an average of less than 60% area median income. These units would be a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The building would also replace the existing parking structure with two floors of parking containing about 126 parking spaces available to all residents of the Grand Street Guild. Next slide. The second building, called Building 3-6, would be located on the south side of Broom Street. It currently contains a one-story vacant building, which was formerly a childcare center. That center recently moved to its permanent location in the new Essex Crossing development. Next slide. On this site, the applicant proposes a new 16-story 100% affordable residential building with ground floor community facility space. The building is intended to cater to seniors earning an average of 50% AMI, and it would contain up to 245 studio and one-bedroom apartments. The 6,000 square feet of community facility space is intended to contain senior services. Next slide. The second modification will reflect improvements to the existing open spaces on the site. Next slide. There is existing open space on the block that is accessible to the public, and as part of this application, the applicant proposes a series of improvements in the areas adjacent to the proposed buildings, which are shown in gray. The applicant intends to add two new community gathering spaces to the south of each of the proposed buildings, as well as passive lawn space, shaded seating areas along the east-west and north-south corridors, and a children's play area behind Building 3-6. All of these spaces will continue to be open to the public as they are today. Next slide. The last modification of the LSRD would include adding an existing refuse building to the site plan. Next slide. That refuse building currently services the three existing Grand Street Guild developments and was completed in 2013. It occupies about 3,500 square feet on the southwest corner of Broom and Pitt Streets. Next slide. So this slide shows the existing LSRD site plan on the left and the proposed LSRD site plan on the right. The buildings shaded in gray on the proposed site plan represent the buildings that would be added to the site plan. The dark-shaded buildings with red numbering are the two new proposed buildings to be constructed, and the dark-shaded building with the black numbering is the existing refuse building. Next slide. To summarize, this application by Clinton Broom Development LLC would modify the Sewer Park Extension East LSRD to facilitate the development of two new 100% affordable buildings and open space improvements. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any Commissioners who would like to be... Both questions would like to be heard. Commissioner, please.
Hi, thank you. I was wondering, you didn't mention anything about sort of the mid-block pedestrian walkway that I recollect is there. Could you sort of tell me what's happening with it? Am I thinking about the right spot?
You are. Production, can we go to Slide 18? So I guess as we're getting there, I can talk through it a little bit. There is an east-west corridor that goes directly through the block, and that is open to the public. Almost there. Here we go. Perfect. So in the center of the screen, that's where that east-west corridor is, and it connects Pitt to Clinton Street. And there's also several connections north and south connecting Broom and Grant Street. The areas that are going to be modified and updated as part of this action are the ones that are going to be just adjacent to the two new proposed buildings. So that center corridor that you were talking about will be upgraded to have new seating areas, new shaded trees, trellises to provide shade, just general updates to keep that passageway open. One passageway that we were encouraged by the applicant doing is that this north-south connection on the furthest left, so that's the one that's directly to the right of the proposed building on the corner. None of the north-south corridors were currently ADA accessible. There is a stair because of the grade change between Grant and Broom Streets, and the north-south corridor there, yes, exactly, right there, that one will be ADA accessible north and south.
So I guess I'm wondering, I see a building at the corner, at Clinton, above where there was a path. Is that no longer a path? Do we do not have a connection between Clinton at all? So this is effectively a dead-end path at this point?
Yeah, so that, the dead end into the building. So the building entrance will be here.
So there's no public access through that building at this time?
Not proposed, no.
Is there... Well, I mean, why would we choose to eliminate a connection, a pedestrian connection? That from, and I live in the area, so I'm familiar with it, and I know it gets used. I'm just, I don't quite understand the planning rationale.
So here, I think it's really just to accommodate the new building. This is all, it is open to the public, but this is private space. And so we still are able to maintain the connections, although you don't, not if it goes straight through the whole block. You're still able to go down Grant Streets and Broom Streets. And also, if you do come from Pitt Street going to the west, you're going to be able to go out, out to Broom Street and out to Grant Street as well. But I do understand that point.
Yeah, that's definitely a concern.
Rational when they come back.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Others? Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. Who's managing the public space? I assume it's essentially private public space, even though it's open to the public? So who manages it?
The Grand Street Guild. So the three, it's the owner of the three developments that currently exist there, and it's going to be the same owner that's putting in the two proposed buildings.
Yeah, okay. And you mentioned the refuse building. Are they building a new refuse building? Is that what you were saying? And is that what we see as 3-4 on this slide?
No, so 3-4, that is an existing building. And so that building was filed for permits in 2011 and was completed in 2013. And the department actually instructed the applicant to add this to the site plan so that it reflects the most current existing conditions on the site.
Oh, so they're not building a new refuse building? You're just acknowledging the fact that there's one there already?
Correct.
Got it.
They didn't come to the Commission for a modification at that time. It's actually a relatively, it's a modern-age sanitation building. It's a relatively good-looking building, and we did think it made sense as part of this action to include it within the large scale. Others? Okay, then we will refer this to the Community Board for 45 days.
Thank you.
All right. The second item on our agenda is a non-Euler referral of a modification to a previously approved special permit and restrictive declaration in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Andy Cantu.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, same.
Jeff, can we go to Slide 2, please? This is a private application by 590 Madison LLC requesting a modification to zoning special permit to modify the design and amenities of the indoor public space located at 590 Madison Avenue in Midtown Manhattan Community District 5. The amendment would allow the existing food kiosk located in the building 16,000-square-foot atrium to operate a seating area for the exclusive use of its patrons. Next slide. The project site is located in the 43-story office building on the west side of Madison Avenue between East 56th and East 57th Streets. This is a photo of the building looking southwest from the corner of Madison and 57th. Next slide, please. This is a view of the atrium containing the indoor public space on the backside of the building, looking northeast from East 56th Street. Next slide. The project area is typical of Midtown with high-density, high-lot coverage commercial development. The land uses within the surrounding area are mostly office and hotel uses with ground-floor retail. The site is within the northern subarea of the East Midtown Subdistrict of the Special Midtown District, but the building was constructed pursuant to the former Fifth Avenue Special District regulations. Next slide, please. The 43-story office building at 590 Madison was built in the early 1980s as the headquarters of IBM. The zoning lot consists of the main tower at the northeast corner of the block, as well as two smaller buildings on the western side of the lot. The lot contains a total of 83,000, 830,000 square feet of floor area, or 16.9 if they are. In 1977, a special permit was granted pursuant to the Fifth Avenue Special District, allowing for a floor area bonus of 28,000 square feet for the 4,700-square-foot through-block arcade connecting 56th Street and 57th Street, highlighted here in red. At the same time, the building received an as-of-right floor area bonus for the 8,300-square-foot covered pedestrian space, highlighted in blue, which generated a floor area bonus of a little more than 100,000 square feet. Additionally, a 3,500-square-foot non-bonus indoor seating and retail area, also referred to as the public access area, shown in purple along the East 56th Street frontage, was also provided. In practice, the through-block arcade, the covered pedestrian space, and the non-bonus public access area operate as a single contiguous space and are referred to as the indoor public space, which has a total square footage of approximately 16,400 square feet. Next slide, please. The indoor public space is an approximately 60-foot-tall glass-enclosed atrium. Pursuant to the original approval, the food kiosk had been located on the western side of the non-bonus public access area. It was refurbished and relocated to its present location when a sculpture garden was approved in 1995. The food kiosk, which has been in operation since the building was completed, is now located near the southeast corner of the atrium within the non-bonus public access area. On your left are photos of what the seating area looks like today without the proposed changes. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing to create a seating area of approximately 1,500 square feet within the non-bonus public access area with approximately 16 tables and 60 chairs that would be reserved for patrons of the existing food kiosk. Freestanding acrylic barriers would be utilized to define the perimeter of the seating area. Three umbrellas are also proposed for the food kiosk seating area, and no other changes to the amenities in the indoor public space are proposed. And the existing 32 tables and 110 chairs located in the covered pedestrian space would continue to be available to the public without restriction. This is an elevation that shows greater transparency. It makes the cafe seating area visually more integrated with the larger public space. Additionally, there were some outdated reporting requirements related to the closure of the indoor public space for private and community events, and the applicant is requesting some minor changes to the language of the restrictive declaration that would simplify those requirements, which would be more consistent with what we currently require owners with similar spaces. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Jeff, you can go to the next slide.
Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Levin?
Yes, thank you, Andy, for the presentation. I wonder, will the kiosk also be available to serve, I guess it would amount to takeout tenants, takeout patrons? Or will it be exclusively serving the people who are going to eat in the segregated area?
That I'm not sure, but I could definitely let the owners know when they come back to present.
Okay, and I guess then I'd be interested in a little more information about how the kiosk is going to function. Is it really going to, is it going to turn into a restaurant with table service? Or is it really a, remain a kiosk where you purchase your food at the kiosk counter and then go on your own seat? But if they can tell us when they come back, that would be great.
Of course.
Commissioner Verne?
Thank you. So this is actually, I think, one of the better indoor pops. It's a really pretty successful space. The only problem with it now is that there's a massive, heavily armed Secret Service contingent blocking the arcade in front of the entrance to the trunk tower, but hopefully that will end after the end of this year for other reasons. But I'm struggling to find out what is the difference here, because there is already a de facto private restaurant in the space that you're talking about. So what is actually changing?
So yeah, so the, what you see today is, hasn't been approved by us. That was set up by the owners of the food kiosk. They were issued a violation by DOB. They paid the fine, and now they're coming to us to have this be legalized.
I see.
They're also changing, you know, those low planners and wooden barriers to acrylic barriers, so there would be a greater degree of transparency.
And are they expanding the amount of privatized area that they're using currently or not?
No, it's still around about 1,500 square feet.
Okay, okay. Because I think actually, I mean, much as one hates to allow encroachment of privatization onto public space, that little cafe actually works quite well, and there's still plenty of space left for everybody else, as far as I can tell. But...
Yeah, the thing I would know, Commissioner Verne, is that this was non-bonus space, which...
And it's non-bonus space, yeah, yeah. So yeah. So how much fine do they have to pay?
I'm not sure.
Do you know? Probably something derisory, I imagine, but yeah.
I'm going to ask them as a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Duette?
Oh.
Who was speaking?
It's Fred, Sirul.
Oh, Commissioner Sirul, I'm sorry. I'm having problems with my raise-hand function.
Me? I don't have, I can't, mine is missing for some reason. So that's why I'm literally raising my hand. I know it's hard to see. I guess my, it's really a thought about this, and it's less about the application than the revelation that they received a violation. I'm wondering, while I understand the long-term plan here to, you know, to ensure that this use is legal, would, wouldn't this use be permissible currently under the mayor's executive order for the pops and the food establishment inside the pops right now? I mean, I, my, and perhaps it's because they're not registered either. That could be a piece of the puzzle missing. But my understanding of the rules and my understanding of the sort of execution of them in many places is that this particular use at this moment in time, even without the Commission's approval, wouldn't be a violation based on what could happen for exclusive dining within public spaces like the outdoor dining in the, you know, in the street.
So, right, good question. My understanding is that the cafe itself has closed down temporarily, at least. And I believe that because this is technically an indoor space, that it is not subject to the mayor's executive order, but I could confirm that with you. And just to be clear, they received the violation before COVID.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Well, that's, okay, understood. I just wondered if even in this period of time, although if the cafe is not open, it's not relevant. But if the cafe is not open because they fear opening it is a, you know, would continue the violation in this period of time that they're dealing with it, I, it may be an option for them to pursue, while this is happening, the temporary use under the executive order. I'm not sure, but I would think that that's an option. But it's not clear to me because of the indoor space. But I do believe it applies even in indoor spaces where there's potential exclusive use options. But again, not my issue. I just tried, was trying to relate the issues to one another.
Yeah, we'll confirm the applicability to indoor spaces, but this is the second time we've seen an applicant coming through to get the permission because there's the uncertainty when the emergency executive order goes away, and certainly I hope that it goes away quickly because of what that says about the progress of the...
Correct, correct. I'm with, I'm with you, yeah.
And Commissioner Sirulow and Chair Lago, if I may, this is Eric Botzford from the Manhattan Office. Hi. I just want to clarify, the executive, emergency executive order as it relates to the temporary use of pops, for indoor spaces, there isn't a distinction made between indoor and outdoor spaces in terms of the dining or use of spaces as cafes. I think what you're recalling, perhaps, Commissioner Sirulow, is that indoor spaces are permitted to close to the public in certain instances, but they are not required to. So dining could be pursued pursuant to the executive order. As Andy has noted, if this, yeah, if this establishment is currently closed, obviously it, you know, has different bearing on their ability to utilize the provisions of the executive order. And of course, the executive order, you know, does only exist for as long as the, you know, the mayor continues to extend the provisions. So, and from a long-term perspective, you know, perhaps this makes sense for them to seek that security of having the permission in hand.
Oh, I can understand the long-term planning to get beyond the, you know, to create a legalization beyond the executive order. I was trying to fit between the current use of it and the ability potentially to use it in this moment in time pursuant to the executive order while this process continued on. Of course, not knowing the cafe was closed at the moment, which is, of course, a big issue, so.
Absolutely, and we can certainly be sure to, you know, be sure that the applicant is aware of the provisions of the executive order. They may be able to take advantage of.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we will refer this to the Community Board for 45 days.
Thank you.
All right. The third item on the agenda is a presentation for future certification of a site selection and acquisition in Queens, Community District 7. Our presenter is Yae Keng-Yang.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide. The Department of Sanitation and DCAST are seeking the site selection and acquisition of a privately-owned property to facilitate the continued use of an existing parking lot located at 122-10, 31st Avenue in the College Point neighborhood of Queens, Community District 7. The parking lot has been occupied by the Department of Sanitation since October 1st, 2015, and has been used for the agency's overflow vehicle storage and equipment, as well as other sister-agency vehicles awaiting repair pursuant to the mayoral directive for fleet consolidation. The parking lot addresses the Mayor's Executive Order 161 requiring consolidation of municipal fleet operations and central... of municipal fleet operations and centralization of repair and maintenance functions to reduce fleet costs and improve service. Next slide. The project site is located within M two-one district within the College Point Special District. The M two district allows for parking lot use. Within the Special District, all uses must meet M one district performance standards and require enclosure and screening to minimize impact on residential blocks in the College Point neighborhood. Next slide. Land uses within the M two district area consist primarily of parking facilities, industrial and manufacturing, transportation and utility uses. The project site in the hash red is adjacent to such uses, including storage yard, parking lot, a self-storage facility, utility yard and showrooms for wholesale construction materials. Next slide. The project site's proposed parking lot annex supports the Q seven garage and Q seven A, Q eleven A mechanical broom annex, both located one block north of the project site. Commercial uses such as HomeDebu and CubeSmart self-storage are located to the south of the project area between one twenty-third Street and College Point Boulevard. A variety of construction-related firms occupy much of the surrounding area. ConEd operates a large parking lot and vehicle maintenance facility at the corner of Thirty-First Avenue and College Point Boulevard. Next slide. There are several city facilities located closely to the project site. The Q seven garage is located to the northwest at thirty dash oh four one hundred and twenty-first Street and the Q seven A, Q eleven A mechanical broom annex, as well as the lot cleaning unit, are all located in the same building at thirty dash nineteen one hundred and twenty-second Street to the northeast of the project site. The Department of Sanitation's North Shore Marine Transfer Station and Household Special Waste Drop Off are located to the west at the end of Thirty-First Avenue. Other state and city agencies also operate facilities near the project site, including NYPD's Tow Pound and Police Academy and the state's DMV. Next slide. This existing photo shows the fenced and paved proposed parking lot annex from Thirty-First Avenue. Next slide. This photo shows typical overflow vehicles that are located within the parking lot annex. Operationally, the lots store a combination of sixteen to twenty-four vehicles and five to ten condemned trucks, as well as short-term parking of ten to fifteen empty roll-on, roll-off containers and typically three to four vehicles from other agencies await, awaiting repair. The lot will operate five days a week, Monday through Friday, from six AM to two PM. No personnel are stationed on the site. Next slide. The Department of Sanitation, in conjunction with DCAST, seeks site selection and acquisition of this thirty-eight thousand square feet parking lot at one twenty-two dash ten Thirty-First Avenue to continue to support Department of Sanitation's operations for the garages and to continue operation without trucks parking on neighborhood streets. Department of Sanitation has no plans for any future construction on the project site. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
And some commission. Vice Ternuckle.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. The rider did not contain the proposed duration of, of the lease. This is a privately owned site. So do you know what the proposed usage is? I would assume it's, must be at least ten years.
So the proposed new lease is supposedly for October two thousand and twenty-five.
Oh. Why so, uh, do you know, or I, I can put this question to DOS.
Absolutely.
Do you know why it's such a, a, a short term?
I do not know and we're waiting confirmation from Department of Sanitation.
Also, I, I question, notwithstanding the current fiscal situation with the city, whether or not this is a, an acquisition target for the city, given the fact that this is a use that's going to endure for the foreseeable future. So those two questions that I'd like to propound to the Department of Sanitation or DCAST.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I'll be present at the, at the hearing on Wednesday.
This is, this is for future certification, yeah.
I apologize, too many sanitation garages. My confusion. Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Um, yes, just out of curiosity, it's convenient that that slide is the one that's before us. What's the large sand pile immediately to the south?
Um, that is a privately owned construction business. I think I have, may have noted it.
And it is a large sand pile? It's not, not a historic ash heap or anything?
No, I think it's, I don't know, I don't think it's sand, I think it might be dirt. Is that the same?
Okay. Thank you, just curiosity.
Sure.
It is pretty dramatic. Other questions? Okay, then this sanitation garage, or the parking lot for the Department of Sanitation, we, the department will certify this when the UDOT clocks restart on the fourteenth of September.
Okay, the fourth item on our agenda is also a presentation for future certification of the UDOT designation and project approval zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens, Community District fourteen. Our presenter is Hala Sala.
Hi, good afternoon. Next slide, please. This is an HPD-sponsored project within the Auburn Urban Renewal Area in Queens, Community District fourteen. The requested actions are for a UDOT zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment. Next slide. The urban renewal area was designated in nineteen sixty-eight and is bounded by Beach Thirty-Second Street to the east, Beach Eighty-First Street to the west, Rockaway Freeway to the north and Rockaway Beach Boardwalk to the south. The goal of the URA was to facilitate the removal of structurally substandard buildings for the development of new and, sorry, for new low and moderate income housing. Several developments have been completed within the Auburn Urban Renewal Area, including Ocean Village, Water's Edge, Sea View Towers and Auburn by the Sea. The remaining portion of the urban renewal area outlined in red consists of the project area seeking land use actions today. Next slide. Following the adoption of the urban renewal area, development of Ocean Village began in nineteen seventy-two, producing one thousand ninety-two units in the central portion of the urban renewal area. Two years later, two towers containing four hundred and sixty units, known as Sea View Towers, were built at the most eastern portion of the urban renewal area. In nineteen seventy-eight, three two-family homes were built across from Ocean Village through HUD program. However, based on a study in nineteen eighty-seven, the city concluded that construction of solely low and moderate income housing, as stipulated in the nineteen sixty-eight plan, was no longer desirable as half of the subsidized housing in Queens were located on the Rockaway Peninsula. The Board of Estimate approved an amendment to the urban renewal plan in nineteen ninety, which consisted of various land use actions to facilitate the development of mixed-use community selected through an RFP process in nineteen eighty-eight. However, this project was never built due to high infrastructure cost and a poor real estate market. In nineteen ninety-nine, the city council approved the development of Water's Edge, which consisted of seventy-eight units of infill housing in phase one and a hundred and twenty-two units in phase two. A second amendment to the urban renewal plan was adopted in two thousand and three, intended to facilitate the Auburn by the Sea project, as well as the eastern portion of the urban renewal area. The second amendment had substantial changes to the first amendment plan, but retained the predominant focus of residential housing. It also mapped a significant portion of the area as parkland to create a nature preserve and enhance natural resource protection in environmentally sensitive areas. In two thousand and six, a development team was designated through an RFP to develop the eastern portion of the urban renewal area and in two thousand and eight, city council approved a UDOT amendment to facilitate that proposal. However, due to the two thousand and eight financial crisis and Hurricane Sandy in two thousand and twelve, construction on the project didn't happen. Since then, there has been, have been design competitions for the area to develop resiliently and the same team from the two thousand and six RFP are still with the project today. Next slide. The eastern portion of the urban renewal area is outlined in yellow and is just south of the Edgemere Urban Renewal Area. Other notable developments within the surrounding area outside of the urban renewal area are Beach Green Dunes developments and the Edgemere Commons, which are all providing a hundred percent affordable housing. Next slide. The project area is a total lot area of approximately one hundred and sixteen point five acres and comprises predominantly of vacant and unimproved city-owned land. It is generally bounded by Rockaway Freeway and Edgemere Avenue to the north, Rockaway Beach and Boardwalk to the south, Beach Thirty-Second Street to the east and Beach Fifty-Sixth Place to the west. The Auburn East Project area is divided into a thirty-five acre nature preserve, a fifteen acre dune preserve, recreation and open green space and the development area. The main objective of this application is to expand the UDOT designation to incorporate the nature preserve, as well as establish a mixed-use district to facilitate the development of a microbrewery. Next slide. The project area is mapped as parkland within the nature preserve, as well as R six, R six slash C two four and C four four within the development site. The entire project area is vacant and unimproved, with the exception of Public School one oh six, which is not included within the project site. Surrounding land uses include a mix of one, two and multifamily housing, commercial, light manufacturing and community facilities, such as Peninsula Hospital and Rehabilitation Center and the Queens Public Library of Auburn. Next slide. Here are some images of the project area. The image on the left shows the view of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street to be sighted with the proposed brewery, while the image to the right shows an aerial view of the vacant development site. Next slide. Again, some photos of the unimproved conditions of the project area. Next slide. The proposed project is a new community with mixed-use residential, commercial, manufacturing, community facility and passive and active open spaces, uses within the eastern portion of the site and a thirty-five acre nature preserve within the western portion of the site. Next slide. The proposed project includes the creation of a thirty-five acre nature preserve between Beach Forty-Fourth Street and Beach Fifty-Sixth Place and between Edgemere Avenue and Rockaway Beach Boardwalk. The nature preserve is mapped as parkland and would be under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. It would be publicly accessible via a network of trails with a focus to enhance and protect the fragile maritime ecology. Nearly four acres of existing impervious surfaces would be removed and replaced with natural beach sand and native planting. Non-native, disrupted or poor-quality habitats will be restored to a naturalistic condition, attracting wildlife through an improved diversity of plant species, including native grassland, shrubland, maritime woodland and wet meadows. Immediately east of the nature preserve would be a multipurpose building with restrooms, park ranger locker room, community space and a parking lot. Next slide. The development site is bounded by shorefront Parkway, Edgemere Avenue to the north and Rockaway Beach and Boardwalk to the south, Beach Thirty-Second Street to the east and Beach Forty-Fourth Street to the west. The development is anticipated to provide one thousand six hundred and fifty residential units, two hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial development, ten thousand square foot microbrewery, twenty-two thousand square feet of community facility space, three point three acres of private open space and fifteen acres of public open space in the form of a dune preserve. A total of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five parking spaces are envisioned for the development. The overall site plan seeks to create a mixed-use neighborhood with multifamily apartment buildings concentrated nearest the Beach Thirty-Second Street, Edgemere Station, with typology and density reducing closer to the waterfront. The development is anticipated to provide affordable rental units, as well as homeownership opportunities. The developer would also construct three privately owned and maintained streets, which would function as extensions of Seagurt Avenue between Beach Thirty-Second Street and Beach Thirty-Fourth Street, as well as between Beach Thirty-Fifth Street and Beach Thirty-Eighth Street. The developer would also construct a private street, which would function as an extension of Lehman Road and run east to west between Beach Thirty-Second and Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. Next slide. The proposed development would feature a mix of uses and development types, including attached and semi-detached single-family residences, one and two-family townhomes, multifamily residential buildings with ground floor commercial use and standalone commercial and community facility buildings. Building heights would range from one to eleven stories with a maximum height of approximately a hundred and ten feet. The commercial development would be concentrated to the intersection of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street and Edgemere Avenue near the A train station and along the pedestrian corridor that connects Edgemere Avenue to the waterfront. The pedestrian corridor would be anchored by a ten thousand square foot microbrewery, five thousand square foot tap house and a sixty thousand square foot hotel. Next slide. In terms of resiliency, the project would provide a fifteen acre dune preserve to the southern boundary of the development and the buildings are pushed back from the coast with the densest portion concentrated to the north. Rainwater would be harvested for irrigation and storm water would be managed on-site. The base flood elevation of the site is ten feet and the proposed ground floor is projected to be sixteen feet. Next slide. The proposed actions today include a UDOT designation of forty tax lots bounded by Beach Fifty-Sixth Place to the west, Beach Thirty-Second Street to the east, Rockaway Freeway to the north and the Boardwalk to the south. The UDOT designation would include all block and lots within the boundary except for the parcel for Public School one oh six. Land uses are intended to be residential, commercial and community facility. Next slide. The zoning map amendment is proposed for a new MX district to the southern portion of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. The boundary would be three hundred and seventy feet north of Oceanfront Road and a hundred and twenty feet west of Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. The MX district would be an M one four, R six zoning district and would permit medium-density residential units, as well as breweries up to ten thousand square feet. The applicant team intends to enter into a disposition agreement limiting manufacturing uses within the rezoning area to brewery use. Next slide. The rezoning area is shown on the site plan in the dashed line and the zoning map amendment would facilitate the development of a proposed ten thousand square foot brewery and five thousand square foot tap, tap house or restaurant. Next slide. A text amendment is proposed to add MX twenty-one to the list of special mixed-use districts mapped throughout the city. No changes to the standard rules for mixed-use districts are proposed. Next slide. In summary, the proposed actions, as well as the actions approved in two thousand and three, would facilitate the development of one thousand six hundred and fifty residential units, two hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial space, twenty-two thousand square feet of community facility space, a ten thousand square foot brewery, private streets, thirty-five acre nature preserve and fifteen acres of open space. Thank you, and I cannot take any questions.
Vice Ternuckle.
Uh, thank you. This is a very unique project. I, it seems to seek to accomplish a lot of different planning policy initiatives within one development. I'm just curious about the funding sources. I don't know that I've ever seen a project with eighty percent affordability and thirty percent market. At least I haven't seen many, many proposals like that. I don't know if you know, but I, uh, what the funding sources are, but I, I'm just curious to know what they are.
Sure, I'll have the applicant team speak more to that, but they will be using HPD and AM HUD programming for the majority of the affordable housing. and AM HUD programming, uh, for the majority of the affordable housing.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's, you know, a more specific breakdown in that. I mean, we, we've seen them in, in prior write-ups so I, I'd just like, like to know. Thank you.
Sure, I'll have them speak to that.
Commissioner Rumpf.
Thank you, Holla, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions. Um, has there been any discussions with, with the MTA in regards to making the Beach Thirty Sixth Street handicapped accessible?
Um, I'm uncertain. We can have the, the development team speak to that, um, at the public hearing. However, a lot of this, you know, the, the actions that we have today are really just limited to the rezoning at the, um, micro brewery site and the UDOT. But yes, we can have them speak to if they've had any conversations with, with the MTA regarding accessibility.
We actually also have been working very closely with the MTA as they develop their accessibility plan and so we can check with our team internally to see if this station is on the priority list of stations.
Okay, uh, just two more quick questions. Do they have a potential tenant for this micro brewery?
They do, um, it's envisioned right now to be Rockaway Brewery Company which is currently headquartered in Long Island City so this would be bringing them, um, to the Rockaways.
And my last question is what was the rationale behind putting a hotel over there? And how many rooms would this hotel be?
Sure, um, the idea is for it to be kind of a, a destination, um, area along with the, the brewery being located there. Um, I'll have the team speak further on the exact rationale for the placement. Um, but I believe it's a hundred keys, um, is the, is the hotel.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bellows.
Hi, I'll, yeah, um, I, you know, kind of following up on the Vice Chair's comments. It'd definitely be helpful to kind of see the AMI mix, the unit mix. Um, also, I'd love to see, um, more information about, uh, the resiliency. You, you mentioned the base flood elevation being ten feet and the first floor being sixteen feet but especially since we're talking about, um, you know, uh, single-family homes. It'd be helpful to, um, get a better sense of what particular protections, um, you know, it's, it's challenging for a multifamily property owner to deal with resiliency issues. Um, it'll be even that much more challenging for a single-family and it'll be helpful to have more information about like which aspects are, you know, market rate and which ones are affordable, you know, looking specifically at the site plan.
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Levin.
Um, well, Commissioner Bellows actually got, um, essentially both of my questions and put them rather more politely than I might have. Um, but, uh, following up on Commissioner, um, Knuckles' question, I noticed that the original UDOT here was for the same number of units but at twenty percent affordable housing and eighty percent market rate and, um, the amended or the, the, the new UDOT that we're being asked to approve here is an exact flip. And I wonder how that fits into the history of this site where you observed that back in the day it, there was a concern about concentrating so much, um, affordable housing in the Rockaways and now we said and that was, it was corrected through the nineties and aughts and now we seem to be going back in that direction. Um, I'd be interested in knowing more about the thinking, um, that has led to that, um, and, and also about the financial viability of, of that kind of a project. And I fully share Commissioner Bellows' questions about the wisdom of putting the single-family homes in the face of, uh, flood exposure.
Absolutely, yeah, we will have the applicant team, um, speak about that, um, when they come back.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you and thank you, Holla. Uh, this might also be more of a question for, for Wednesday for the hearing but, um, going back to the resiliency issue.
This is one that's at certification.
Oh, okay, that's it, so when it comes. But, um, uh, going back to the resiliency issue, I mean, it's all very well to raise the buildings if that's what's happening above the flood plain but the streets and sidewalks, uh, they have to be raised as well and I don't know who's doing that. There was a time when there was discussion of the city doing that. Uh, also the, I happen to know from my time at DDC that the water mains from Beach Thirty Second to Beach Sixty Second are completely shot. They keep bursting and flooding the streets. Somebody has to take care of that. DEP's been going around raising the storms so it was above, uh, the projected road levels but nobody's raising the roads. So, my question is, is the developer gonna do that within the confines of this project or is the city gonna come in and do it? Uh, somebody has to take care of it otherwise, uh, it's all very well to have the buildings but if you can't get there because the roads are all flooded, it's not gonna really help. And the second thing is, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, PS One O Six which I think is an elementary school which is a, really a, a poor performing school and I'm wondering with more families coming in, what is the Department of Education saying about the school situation? Improving the schools they have and providing additional schools to meet, uh, what presumably is an influx of new families?
Yeah, in, in terms of the infrastructure, there will be, um, a significant amount of newer upgraded projects, um, throughout the site, um, which includes storm and sanitary sewers, water mains, electric gas and, um, raising of the streets and sidewalks. So, they will actually be raising them from the existing grade to legal grade or higher so that there will be, the entire site will kind of come up and be built out as, um, appropriate. Um, and in terms of the school.
If you could clarify when you said they won't be doing it.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, the developer's doing that?
Development team, yes, but they're all getting, um, funds through, um, HPD through an, it's called the Housing Infrastructure Fund, um, which the, is what the funding source will be from.
Oh, true.
Um, so yes, so there, there'll be, and I, I can have them obviously speak more to the specifics but there are, um, plans to make those improvements as part of the project. And then in terms of the schools, um, we can have the team reach out to DOE about the performance but in terms of, um, the applicable density, that's all analyzed through the environmental, um, review process of whether or not there'll need to be an additional sighting of a school or not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bellows.
Yeah, sorry, second round question. I, I should have asked the first round. Um, what's, what's the relationship of the nature preserves, um, to the Parks Department? If any, who's gonna maintain these things? And I, I, do we have dune preserves already? Is, is this, is this something new? Maybe I'm just unaware of dune preserves. Um, it would just be helpful to have an understanding of that as well.
Sure, so the, the nature preserve actually came out of the two thousand and three EIS. Um, there is an endangered species that currently lives along the beach there, the piping plovers. So, the preserve is really to maintain, you know, the ecological integrity of that area. Um, so it is a, um, mitigation measure that has to be built out prior to any housing that gets built throughout the development site. Um, and in terms of the maintenance, after it is completed, it will be under the jurisdiction of the Parks Department so it will be a, um, New York City park and, um, DPR will have full jurisdiction over it.
There an expectation that the development will contribute to some kind of fund for that? Especially at eighty percent affordable, it'd be helpful to know that.
Sure, we could have them speak to that a little bit more.
Commissioner Bellows, you can also go and volunteer to plant beach grass on top of the dunes. They, they'll be happy to help you.
I'll be sure to sign up for that, yes.
It's actually such a, an achingly beautiful site of a nature preserve. Um, Commissioner Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, all very interesting questions from our fellow commissioners, um, and, and requiring good responses. I, I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, Commissioner Bellows mentioned, um, funding for the project, uh, and so that's gonna affect timing of the project. And so I'd be interested to know, uh, amongst the other questions, what, what are we looking at in terms of phasing for this project? It, it is a project that undoubtedly will not be built in one phase. So, that, that would be interesting to know specifically in light of the federal budget cut to HPD. Um, so this, of course, will be probably out in the outer years. Um, I'm not thinking it's gonna go right away or in one phase. So, knowing that would be very, uh, instrumental to the other questions that we may have. I also was concerned about the sewers that Commissioner Bernie mentioned. I happened to do a lot of work out here, um, on my days at the Housing Partnership and, you know, it is, it is true that a lot of the homes are actually below street level, uh, not in this area but that the ones that do exist and I understand we're gonna be raising the infrastructure here so it'd be, it would be critical, uh, to, of knowing and understanding how this is gonna get done.
Absolutely, yeah, we will flag that for the team and then, um, we'll have them follow up the phasing plan, um, and just, you know, we're target, or they are targeting about a ten-year build out for this whole project. But we'll have them speak to the specifics, um, in the future.
Thank you, Holla.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, so we will add this to the list of projects that we, the department will certify when ULC restarts, um, around the corner on September fourteenth. Thank you, Holla.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item five on our agenda, a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendment in Queens, Community District Four. Our presenter is Kathy Ko. Here we go.
Okay, so this application one ten forty Saltell Avenue rezoning is back for a pre-hearing review session. Next slide. The applicant is Tuckman Associates LLC and the location of the proposal is at one ten forty and one ten thirty-eight Saltell Avenue in Corona, Queens, Community District Four. The actions requested are a zoning map amendment from an R six B district to an R six district and a zoning tax amendment to establish an MI, a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Um, just for a little bit of background, the project area was mapped R six under the nineteen sixty-one zoning resolution and it was rezoned to its current district under the nineteen eighty-nine Almous Corona rezoning. Next slide. Um, the project area is located in North Central Queens in Community District Four and it's adjacent to Flushing Meadows Corona Park which is the largest parking queen. Next slide. The proposed rezoning area consists of block nineteen seventy-two, lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight which is located at the intersection of Saltell and Corona Avenue, both of which are wide streets. The dotted black line indicates the proposed rezoning boundaries and the red outline indicates the proposed development site which consists of only lot twenty-eight. The area has a mix of residential, commercial and community facility uses. Residential develop, development patterns are primarily two to three-story residences and the subject block is developed with the six-story Rego Park Health Center which is also owned by the applicant. Other community facility uses within a three-block radius include an assisted living facility, a nursing home and senior housing. Next slide, please. An existing uses in the proposed rezoning area are shown here, um, a two-story residence and a one-story garage on the development site and a two-story residence on the out parcel. The Rego Park Health Center is located mid-block and the six-story Madison York Assisted Living Facility is located on the e- eastern end of the block. And the proposed development would paint community facility uses to complement the applicant-owned Rego Park Health Center. Next slide. Um, so the first site photo here shows a view of the project area on Saltell Avenue which is eighty feet wide. The second show, view shows Corona Avenue which is a hundred feet wide but facing east with the development site to the right. And the third photo, photo shows the development site from the corner of Saltell Avenue and Corona Avenue facing southeast. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes to develop a new six-story building at a height of sixty-two feet covering lot twenty-eight with frontages on Saltell Avenue and Corona Avenue. The applicant proposes a total of thirty thousand eight hundred and forty-eight square feet at three point six three FAR and there would be approximately twenty-eight thousand five hundred and, five hundred and forty-eight square feet of residential space and approximately nine thousand hundred and eighty-one square feet of community facility space. There would be approximately twenty-five new dwelling units of which six would be made permanently affordable under MIH option one and approximately thirteen residential parking spaces would be located on the ground floor accessed by an existing twelve-foot curb, curb cut on Saltell Avenue, I'm, I'm sorry, um, on Corona Avenue. Next slide, please. To facilitate this development, the applicant proposes two actions. The first is a rezoning of block nineteen seventy-two, lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight from an R six B district to an R six district. The existing R six district line would be extended westward to the center line of Saltell Avenue. Next slide. And in conjunction with the rezoning, the applicant proposes to establish within the proposed R six district an MIH area with options one and two and the MIH area would be coterminous with the rezoning boundary. The AMI for this portion of Corona is approximately forty-six thousand which is just under the AMI for Community District Four which is roughly forty-seven thousand. Next slide. Community Board Four held a public hearing on February eleventh, twenty twenty and the board voted to disapprove the application. On February twentieth, twenty twenty, the board submitted a statement following the recommendation which explained that CB Four does not support the request for added density to result in increased profits for the property owner. Next slide. The Queens Borough President held a public hearing on February twentieth, twenty twenty and a disapproval of the application was recommended with conditions based on a need for additional units of deeper affordable housing particularly for seniors, for the development to include a community center also preferably for seniors and to include a more diverse unit mix throughout the development. Next slide. So, the applicant proposes the following changes to the development in response to feedback received through, throughout ULC. The proposed site plan presented to you at the December review session showed a dialysis center on the cellar level and the applicant now proposes that the cellar level be used for a community center. Um, ground floor uses would include an ambulatory diagnostic treatment center and the originally proposed residential lobby, community facility, offices and thirteen parking spaces would remain. Next slide. Uh, the previous proposal should, included only one bedrooms and the applicant has provided updates to the site plan to include one two-bedroom unit and one studio unit to each floor. So, there would then be a total of five two-bedroom units, fifteen one-bedroom units and five studio units. Next slide. The slide shows the elevation from Corona Avenue and here you can see pedestrian access to both the residential portion of the building and community facility portion as well as the garage door leading to the ground floor parking spaces. Next slide. And the elevation here shows the facade of the building on Saltell Avenue with access to both the residential and community facility portion. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Cirullo. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Bellows, apologies.
Um, thank you. I, I'm just, when, when, uh, the applicant is before us, it'd be helpful to hear what they think market is in the area considering what AMI is and, um, it's, you know, if they considered, um, a, a hundred percent affordable versus an even MIH project.
Sure, I'll have them speak more to that.
Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Kathy, could you go to the floor plan of the, of the typical apartment layout?
Sure, um, just, that would be slide twelve.
Yeah, whoops, just went past it. There we go, well, next slide, I think.
Oh, did you want the?
The typical, well, actually, stay on this for a minute. It, it's a bit, it's a bit disappointing that the, uh, community center gets relegated to the cellar in the dark and the parking spaces get to be on the street so I think it would be better if they could be flipped. Why not just put the parking below, have the community center be at the street level? Uh, but if you could go to the next slide which is the typical apartment, uh, layouts. So, I, I just, you know, looking at these apartment layouts, these are some of the worst apartment layouts I've seen in a long time. And if you look at the, uh, if you look at the top of the drawing, you know, you enter that apartment, the kitchen is off to the left, there are two bedrooms which are microscopically small, nine feet by ten, is it, including the closet and they open directly into the living room. And then you go across the hallway and there's a bedroom that's almost as big as the entire apartment that we just looked at and then a large living room. And, and so you go on down, I mean, I, some of the layouts are just very strange and one wonders who gets the one bedroom with the massive bedroom and living room and who gets the tiny two-bedroom with the two little closets and the kitchen tucked to the side. And I'm just wondering, I don't know quite how the- And I'm just wondering, I don't know quite how the mechanisms are allocating, the, the affordable units works, but there are apartments here, I mean, that, that living room in the first unit there is unfurnishable. You couldn't live really well in that space. So this architect needs to take a fresh look at the apartment layouts, in my opinion. I could go on, but there are all sorts of problems, in my opinion.
Sure.
And I'm assuming, I'm assuming HPD looks at these things when they're reviewing the plan, don't they?
Sure, I'll make sure that the, um, the applicant team can speak to the layout of these apartments on Wednesday and.
Kathy?
Yeah, but I'm.
The applicant should make sure to include their architect.
Yeah, I'm also wondering what HPD has said about the, about the plan review and to what extent they're able to influence the way the developer does these things. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll follow up with HPD on that, Commissioner. Commissioner Delo's.
I'm, I'm wondering actually, because of the recommendations from the community board and the borough president about the shift in apartments, I'm wondering what the original floor plan looked like and I'm wondering if we're looking at suboptimal floor plans based on smashing, you know, two studios together to, you know, to, to make a two bedroom and it might, it might be interesting to look at the original layout to see, you know, if it's more livable. If you have any points.
Sure, if it's helpful as part of the applicant's presentation, I can request that they include their previous, um, site plan to help compare.
Commissioner Robberd.
Yes, I also share the same concerns as Commissioner Bernie mentioned with regards to the floor plan. One question I had was, how do the community residents, if they need to use the elevator, get down to the cellar? Because I, it looks like they have to go through the ambulatory diagnostic treatment center in order to do that. Uh, if you could just have the design team just clarify, how they're going to provide ADA accessibility down there. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovett.
Um, yes, following up on all of this before we spend a lot, uh, these are important questions about the proposed building itself, but I just want to indicate that I have some questions about the, um, land use rationale of switching from the, um, contextual zoning that was intentionally placed on this area um, back when it was rezoned, what, eighty nine, um, and changing it to an R six and whether that makes sense from a, um, land use standpoint, given the, um, context of the rest of the surrounding area. So I'll be interested in hearing the applicant's pitch on that as well, please.
Sure, what they've communicated so far is that, you know, with the nineteen eighty nine contextual rezoning, it did reflect land use patterns at the time to rezone this portion to R six B, essentially a split lot. And there, you know, the built environment to the east of, I'm sorry, the west, do you still reflect the two to three story low scale, but, um, you know, in the immediate surrounding vicinity, the more recent, um, land use changes such as, you know, these six to seven story buildings containing some, uh, community facility uses and such, uh, this building would reflect the more recent built, um, environment.
And that probably underlies the community board's concern about, um, additional development at this site.
Other questions? Okay, we'll see this item at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Wait, Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Twack.
No problem, I was just, I can't figure out where to raise my hand on this, but, so my question was, did we get any updated, um, correspondence from the community board after the applicant agreed to the changes?
Um, we have not. I've encouraged the applicant to reach out, so they'll definitely speak to any updates and communication on Wednesday. Um, they've also reached out to Councilmember Moya, who was present at the community board hearing and they'll provide updates on how that conversation's been.
And do you know if Representative of the Community Board will be giving testimony on Wednesday?
Um, I don't believe so, but.
Just, just make sure they know that we have a, we have a public hearing on this, on Wednesday. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay, so we will see this at a public hearing two days from now.
Okay, moving on to the sixth item on our agenda, uh, is a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Queens, Community District One. Our presenter is Rafael Burgess and, um, this also is a sanitation garage, so.
This is the source of my confusion.
This is the source of all of our confusion, I think. Uh, all right, Rafael.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rafael Burgess and I will be discussing the Queens One Sanitation Garage and Salt Shed, which will have its public hearing on Wednesday. Next slide. The applicant is the Department of Sanitation, along with their co-applicant, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. They're requesting a site selection and acquisition of a lot and a portion of another lot located in Queens, Community District One for a nine point eight acre development site, uh, and easements for vehicular and utility access. They're both, they're proposing to relocate an existing sanitation garage and existing salt shed to a development site that will feature a new three story ninety three thousand seven hundred square foot sanitation garage and a twenty thousand square foot, uh, enclosed salt storage shed. Next slide. So this is a map of Queens, Community District One, generally. Uh, to help orient you, the top of the map is west and the right side is north. On the left side, you can see the location of the existing salt pile. It is on a site, uh, located on the Long Island City waterfront. A little bit to the right of that, you can see the location of the existing sanitation garage, which is located adjacent to the Ravenswood Houses Nitro Development. And then all the way to the right of the map, you can see the location of the proposed site, which is located within the Astoria Industrial Business Zone. Next slide. Some more context on the existing facilities. Uh, the, the image on the left shows the existing Queens One Sanitation Garage, which is surrounded by the Ravenswood Houses and Ravenswood Playground. A big reason for why the Department of Sanitation wants to relocate this garage is, is the fact that local residents have expressed health and quality of life concerns for years due to the presence of diesel powered sanitation garage, uh, sanitation trucks idling in this residential neighborhood. Furthermore, the garage is structurally deficient and undersized for the Department of Sanitation's current and future needs. Mayor, Mayor Bill de Blasio committed a hundred and thirty million dollars in twenty seventeen uh, from the executive budget to build a new garage and relocate the Queens One Sanitation Services. The Department of City Planning is in conversations with the community, HPD and City Hall about future housing and community serving uses for this site and it's anticipated that it would come back to the commission for future actions. The image on the right shows the existing unenclosed salt pile, which is located in Long Island City. It is on a mapped but unbuilt portion of Forty Third Avenue, uh, which is controlled by DOT. The salt pile currently services Queens, Community District One and Hunter's Point. Uh, so both of these facilities, uh, will be relocated together onto the proposed development site that I'm going to talk about now. Next slide, please. The proposed development site is located in the Astoria Industrial Business Zone with, with frontage on Oyster Creek. Uh, it is an M three one zoning district and is generally surrounded by industrial manufacturing and utility uses. There are residential uses located to the south of Twentieth Avenue, which is on the left side of this map. Next slide, please. Uh, this aerial image shows the industrial context, uh, surrounding, surrounding the development site, including several power plants and the Steinway Piano Factory. Next slide. So this site plan illustrates the portions that, uh, the Department of Sanitation seeks to acquire and the portions that will be, uh, acquired for easements. So if we start on the lower portion of the red highlighted area, uh, we see one of the lots that, uh, sanitation seeks to acquire, which is lot forty two. Uh, that's where there will be, uh, a vehicular entrance from, uh, from Nineteenth Avenue. So having this vehicular entrance off of Nineteenth Avenue was preferred in this case, uh, preferred to having it on Twentieth Avenue since, uh, you know, generally they wanted to avoid having the entrance for these, uh, trucks be off of a residential street. There is a privately owned lots between the entrance and the portion of lot three fifty where the garage and the salt shed are, are proposed on the upper right. So there will be an easement for a vehicular access drive and an easement for utilities going towards Twentieth Avenue. And finally, on the upper right, you can see the site plan for the proposed salt shed and sanitation garage. This is, uh, a portion of lot three hundred and fifty, uh, in which sanitation hopes to acquire. Next slide. So this is a rendering showing, uh, what the proposed salt shed and sanitation garage would look like. Next slide. So there's a series of design features, uh, that this development will have that's related to resiliency and sustainability. Uh, the building will be designed for a useful life through at least twenty one hundred. Department of Sanitation would design for a three foot sea level rise. The garage, parking lot, fueling station and salt shed would be built to an eighteen foot designed flood elevation. Mechanical systems and emergency generators will be placed on upper levels of the garage to avoid from flooding. Uh, the Department of Sanitation, uh, seeks to pursue LEED Silver Certification. Uh, they have emphasis on en, energy efficiency, low flow water fixtures, recycled materials and solar panels on the roof. They'll have onsite stormwater harvesting and filtration. And finally, they'll have, uh, electric vehicle charging stations for hybrid and all electric vehicles. Next slide. Some more context on the, uh, workforce, workforce operations. Uh, they would be operating twenty four hours per day, seven days per week. The current facility has a hundred and forty five total assigned personnel. The workforce would include field workers, supervisors, mechanics and clerical personnel and there would be employee parking provided on site. The chart on the left, uh, shows a breakdown of how many employees are assigned to each shift. You can see that, uh, the shift from six AM to two PM is the, uh, has the most employees assigned to it. Next slide. So the Community Board One, uh, held a public hearing on February eighteenth, twenty twenty and voted to approve. Thirty one in favor, one opposed and one is stating. The Queens Borough President held a public hearing on March twelfth, twenty twenty and voted to approve with conditions. The first condition was, uh, you know, when, when the, uh, site on the Ravenswood Houses is vacated, they'd like to see it redeveloped, uh, to provide, you know, affordable housing, especially for seniors. The applicant, uh, has responded to this, uh, by stating that upon relinquishing the site to the city for disposition, they will indicate to DCAST that the community has expressed a, a desire to develop affordable housing for seniors on the site. Uh, furthermore, as mentioned earlier, the Department of City Planning has been involved in discussions with the community and, and other city agencies, uh, for the future planning of this, uh, site on Ravenswood Houses. And so the second condition, uh, was that, uh, the site would, uh, should provide new waterfront public access. So given that the, uh, the site is in an M zoning district and given its land use, uh, it's not required to provide waterfront public access areas as they're defined by the zoning resolution. Uh, however, you know, Department of Sanitation is open to providing waterfront access on the site, but given the city's fiscal situation, they cannot commit to providing waterfront access unless OMB allocates additional funding for the design and construction of, of that waterfront access. Next slide. So they intend on leaving enough space on the site to fit a future waterfront access walkway, uh, so that if additional funds can be procured, uh, that waterfront access can be provided on the site. So on this site plan, you have, uh, a blue path shown here, which represents a potential waterfront access walkway and that would have pedestrian entrance on, uh, Nineteenth Avenue. Next slide. So in conclusion, uh, the existing garage site is not suitable for this type of use, given the quality of health concerns that has posed to Ravenswood residents for years. The proposed development site is an appropriate location for this garage since it's located in an industrial business zone and, and surrounded by industrial uses and it's located far enough away from residential uses. Um, so thank you. That concludes my presentation and I'll take any questions now.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Uh, so this is an acquisition of a fee ownership by the city, right? This is not a lease. I just wanted to clarify.
Uh, my understanding was that it was a lease and I'll have the, um, the applicant, you know, confirm that on Wednesday when they, when they come through.
Oh, it is a lease, okay. Well, yeah, I'd like to, uh, to know that. Thank you. And I'm glad to see the departure of this use from a Nitro campus and I'd look forward to, uh, whatever the, assuming I'm around, uh, um, whatever the future use is proposed. Thank you.
I agree. I think this is one of the most important environmental justice projects that we've seen given it's the current location of both the garage and the salt pile. Commissioner Delo's.
Um, I saw that the money to, uh, shift this use was, um, allocated in twenty seventeen. It'd just be helpful to know whether there's been any impact on, uh, the availability of that given the city's current fiscal, uh, crisis, um, and if that might impact on the timing, um, or the design in any way.
For sure. I'll have the applicant clarify that.
Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, yeah, just to add to that, I mean, credit where it's due, I think, you know, kudos to the mayor, putting this in the executive budget since it's a longstanding environmental justice project, finally going to happen. I think it's truly terrific. Uh, I just wanted to, just one thing on, on the waterfront access, I, I don't know what the overall budget for this is. It must be pretty hefty because it's a sizable project with a garage and the salt shed. The cost of landscaping a bit of waterfront is probably, you know, less than half a percent of that overall budget. I wonder sort of if it couldn't just be squeezed in by a bit of, uh, prudent value engineering in other, other places because it would be a pity to, um, build this and have a sort of unfinished and unkempt, uh, waterfront.
We expect to have at the public hearing, uh, representatives from both, um, sanitation and DCASTs and so we can place the question to them.
Okay, thank you, Rafael.
Other questions? Okay, so we will see this project on, at our public hearing on Wednesday.
All right, uh, back to future certifications, uh, this time in Brooklyn. The second item on our agenda is a presentation for future certification of the zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn, Community District Ten. Uh, here to give his first presentation for the City Planning Commission, uh, is Joshua Vogel.
Thank you and good afternoon commissioners. Thank you for having me. Uh, next slide, please.
We don't have that up yet.
Yeah.
Just give him a minute.
Perfect. Can everyone see it? Great. This is an application by Bay Ride Realty for a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a nine story mixed use building. It would contain forty one dwelling units and ninety three hundred square feet of ground floor commercial. Next slide, please. Project is located at nine one one four Fifth Avenue, corner of Ninety Second Street in the Bay Ridge neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District Ten. Next slide. The project area is roughly bounded by Ninety First Street to the north, Fifth Avenue to the east, Ninety Second Street to the south and Fourth Avenue to the west. Fifth Avenue is a major retail corridor, largely occupied by local businesses with residential above. To the west, the R subway line runs along Fourth Avenue, the transit, the primary transit corridor in the neighborhood. The closest station is a block and halfway at Ninety Third and Fourth. Next slide. The project area lies within the C eight two commercial district. Surrounding area is mapped with C eight two, R six A C two three, R six B C two three, R five B and R four one zoning districts. The project area is located in the special Bay Ridge District. The project area is located from the special Bay Ridge District created in nineteen seventy-eight and substantially modified in two thousand and five. The surrounding area is predominantly commercial and mixed-use, characterized by a range of building types, one to seven stories tall. The commercial uses include office buildings, restaurants, and auto-oriented uses including dealerships, used car lots, and gas stations. Residential and community facility uses primarily occupy the side streets, west of Fourth Avenue and east of Fifth Avenue. Residential uses are typically comprised of one-to-three-story, single-family, and multifamily buildings, three-to-four-story multifamily buildings, and six-story elevator apartment buildings. Community facility uses include Fort Hamilton School, PS-one-oh-four, which is directly across the street from the project area on Fifth Avenue, and the FDNY NG-two-forty-two, which is located just a block south on Fifth Avenue. Also, the Bethel Presbyterian Church is located on Ninety-Fourth. Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue are wide streets at seventy-five feet and a hundred feet wide respectively. Ninety-Second Street is sixty feet wide. The project is well-served by public transit. The Ninety-Fifth Street subway stop on the R-line is located one and a half blocks to the south. The B-sixty-three bus runs in front of the development site on Fifth Avenue, providing connection between Bay Ridge and downtown Brooklyn. And also, the B-eight bus runs along Fourth Avenue connecting Diker Heights and East Flatbush. Next slide, please. Project area consists of twelve tax lots fronting Fifth Ave. and Ninety-Second Street. Next slide. The development site includes two of these lots, lots twenty-three and thirty-one. Next slide. These lots are owned by the applicant and total nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one square feet. Next slide. Project area includes the entire frontage of Ninety-Second Street between Fourth and Fifth Avenues and five lots along Fifth Avenue. Next slide. From the corner of Fourth Avenue and Ninety-Second, Lot thirty-four is a single-family residential building with a holistic center on the ground floor. Lots thirty-two and thirty-three are two-story multifamily houses. Lot three is a three-story multifamily residential building. Lot one-twenty-nine is a three-story residential building with a laundromat on the ground floor. And moving north from the corner of Ninety-Second and Fifth, Lot twenty-nine is a three-story residential building with a restaurant on the ground floor. Lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight are three-story residential buildings with commercial and community facility uses on the ground floor, including a house of worship, a tire shop, and a law office. The project area site also includes a small portion of Lot One, a gas station. This is the only conforming site in the project area other than the two proposed development lots. Under the proposed actions, the non-conforming sites will be brought into conformance. Next slide, please. So here's some site photos. Photo one on the left is a mid-block view on Ninety-Second Street, Lot thirty-one of the development site, which is previously a used car lot but is now vacant. And photo two shows Lot twenty-three of the development site, a parking lot for the adjacent business that's operating on a month-to-month lease at the moment. Next slide. Photo three shows the northeast corner of Fifth Avenue and Ninety-Second. The building on the corner is a restaurant with residential above. Photo four looks south down Fifth Avenue from Ninety-First Street towards the Barzano Bridge. You can see the development site on the right, and across the street on the left is the seventy-foot-tall PS-one-oh-four. Next slide. So here, photo five looks east down Ninety-Second Street from Fourth Avenue. The development site is mid-block on the left. Photo six looks south down Fourth Avenue from Ninety-Second. And the large seven-story building on the left that's facing the development site is ninety-two-oh-one Fourth Avenue, which is an eighty-two-foot-tall commercial and community facility building constructed in nineteen sixty-five. This is before the special Bay Ridge District was established, so it has a FAR of four-point-four. Also in this photo, on the right, is one of the many six-story apartment buildings along Fourth Avenue, constructed in nineteen twenties. This one has a FAR of five-point-two. Next slide, please. The proposed development would consist of a nine-story residential building with commercial on the ground floor and a total area of forty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight square feet, or four-point-five-nine FAR. The building has a total height of ninety-five feet after a setback at seventy-five feet. The one-story commercial component is thirteen feet in height. The residential component would be thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet, or three-point-seven FAR, with a total of forty-one dwelling units. The ground floor commercial would be ninety-three hundred square feet, or point-eight-nine FAR. Currently, the applicant is still in discussion with the council member determining which MIH option to pursue, so there will either be ten affordable units through option one or twelve affordable units through option two. Next slide, please. The nine-story residential building fronts on Fifth Avenue, and the one-story commercial space fronts on Ninety-Second Street. Currently, the applicant is proposing that the commercial space be one unit. Next slide, please. This illustrative rendering shows Fifth Avenue frontage with the residential entrance. Next slide, please. And these massings show the envelope of the proposed development and its surrounding context. Next slide. To facilitate the proposed actions, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from a C-eight-two, special Bay Ridge District, to an R-seven-A-C-two-four, special Bay Ridge District. C-eight-two districts have a maximum commercial FAR of two. Under special Bay Ridge District, community facilities cannot exceed three FAR, and there's a maximum base height of sixty feet and a maximum building height of seventy feet after a setback. R-seven-A districts allow a maximum FAR of four-point-six and a maximum height of ninety-five feet or nine stories. C-two-four districts are commercial overlays that permit a maximum FAR of two in our seven districts. Next slide. In addition, a zoning text amendment is being proposed to establish an MIH area co-terminance with the proposed rezoning area. Next slide. In summary, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate a nine-story mixed-use building that would contain forty-one residential units with ninety-three hundred square feet of ground floor commercial space. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Delauz.
Thanks for the presentation and welcome, Joshua. I guess a couple things. So is this our first MIH in Community Board Ten? That's a question that I have.
Yes.
Okay. I'd be interested to know if the applicant is trying to acquire adjacent properties and the number of rent-stabilized units that are in adjacent properties.
Sure. So I have not heard anything about them looking to acquire any properties, but I'll make a note, and they can report back during the hearing. There is one building, Lot thirty, that is rent-stabilized.
How many? Do you happen to know how many units are in that?
Let me check. I think it's six. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Romperchak.
Thank you. Two questions. Is it forty-one or fifty units?
Okay.
The briefing sheet, this one said fifty. And what was the rationale for R-seven-A as opposed to using R-six-B?
Sure.
Which is pretty much in the area.
So the first question, we got a late Friday update. So that was after the briefing packages went out, which originally reflected fifty, which is in their application. So that was the discrepancy. But right now, the most updated is forty-one units. And then the rationale, the applicant thinks that R-seven-A is appropriate here because of the two wide streets, Fourth and Fifth Avenues. Ninety-Second is not only sixty feet wide, but it is a very small section of the street, and the one-story portion is fronting Ninety-Second. Also, it would bring the residential buildings into conformance, which would help residents get mortgages or refinancing. Also, given the economic situation in the city right now, any privately funded, permanently affordable housing, especially in a neighborhood with no inclusionary housing, would be great. So that's the... And yeah, there is some R-seven-A longshore parkway, but not in the adjacent couple blocks. Okay, thank you.
I think that would also be wise to note that there is a subway station a block or block and a half south.
Yes. So the R subway stop and also the two bus routes are right next to the building, so of the development site.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes, I'm happy to see some affordable housing come into this community, which desperately needs it. Although I am concerned about that several parking lots are being taken away in a neighborhood in which parking is one of the most difficult things to accomplish. I'm not sure if I would agree with the statement that there's a lot of public transit there, having listened to years of pleas from residents about the lack of public transit in that community. Has there been any discussion about where people are going to be able to park and how it's going to affect Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue and all the merchants that are in that area?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I will check with the applicant and report back. But parking was waived due to the only fourteen spots that would need to be provided, and they do have twenty-three bike spots in the building.
If I am correct, the commissioner's question is broader about the use of the current parking areas to meet demand for the commercial strips. So we'll want to make sure that the applicant is prepared to address that.
I mean, it is an incredibly difficult community to get to the merchants who are in that area. And the people are double-parking and triple-parking, and it's a crazy situation as it exists.
Okay, I'll just go with the applicant so they can elaborate. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes, I wanted to understand Mr. Vogel's earlier assertion around the rationale for an R-seven-A and the argument on the part of the applicant that it would bring into compliance, I guess, other zoning parcels. But it doesn't seem to be any other R-seven-A's in immediate proximity to this site. So I just want to understand that. And, you know, the building is, I think, an R-six-B, as Commissioner Romperchak indicated, would certainly seem to be much more compatible with the surroundings.
R-six-B would be out of scope. R-six-A would not, though. And yet, like I said, there is no R-seven-A close by, but there is, I think, maybe eight blocks away on Shore Parkway, the closest. I can definitely report this concern back to the applicant.
Yeah, so I don't, hence, I don't understand the argument that R-seven-A brings into compliance. Isn't that what you said?
Into conformance, the residential buildings that are in a C-eight-two right now are non-conforming.
And R-six-A would do the same, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The proposed, this is Winston Von Engel from the Brooklyn office. The proposed zoning district is at the same density, actually less, than the apartment buildings. Some of the apartment buildings that Josh pointed out are in the surrounding neighborhoods. And we do believe that this is a transit-accessible area. There are lots of transit options between the buses and the subways, and would allow for the construction of affordable housing here, including market-rate housing.
Commissioner Tuck.
Thank you. I don't want to weigh in yet on the R-seven-A, R-six-A issue, but I was wondering if, and I know it hasn't been sent out to the Community Board yet, if there's any indication how the Community Board is leaning on that thought.
They had strong support from the council member and from the Community Board.
For an R-seven-A?
Yes.
Got it. And is that because of the affordable component?
I don't have the exact reason why, but I know that they, when the project started, they were working with the council member, and they had strong support from him.
Thank you.
Others. Okay, we will then certify this project to begin its ULEP journey on September fourteenth, the day that ULEP starts.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to a non-ULEP referral in Brooklyn. The eighth item on our agenda, a referral of a modification of a previously approved special permit and restrictive declaration in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Katie Ianito.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a presentation for a... I'll wait for the presentation to back up.
More cafe space in Domino?
Item eight, yeah. There we go. Oh, that is weird.
Colorful umbrellas.
There we go.
Great. Thank you. So this is a presentation for a referral of a minor modification of part of the Domino Sugar Large-Scale General Development to Community Board One in Brooklyn. Next slide. The applicant is requesting approval of a minor modification to a special permit for height and setback that was previously approved in twenty fourteen. The proposed modification would facilitate a change to the design of a glazed roof addition on one building, the Domino Sugar Refinery, which is a designated New York City landmark. And the Landmarks Preservation Commission has reviewed the new design before you today and issued a certificate of appropriateness. Next slide, please. The Domino Large-Scale General Development Area outlined here in pink covers eleven acres along the East River waterfront just north of the Williamsburg Bridge. And it's generally bounded by Grand Street and Grand Ferry Park on the north, South Fifth Street on the south, the East River on the west, and Kent Avenue on the east, with an easterly extension covering part of the block between South Third Street, South Fourth Street, and White Avenue. The area is comprised of three zoning lots, which are in dotted lines in the area of the photo. Lot one, outlined in orange, includes Domino's public waterfront and open space, as well as three development blocks that are partially. Lot two, shown in blue, refers to refinery building located between River Street and Kent Avenue and the extensions of South Second Street and South Third Street. And Lot three in yellow is the upland easterly extent of the development area where buildout is completely. Next slide. The area surrounding the Domino Development, which is outlined in this land use map in blue, is generally characterized by a mix of residential, industrial, and commercial uses. Upland blocks are generally comprised of single, two-family, and multifamily walk-up residential buildings with some light industrial uses present and concentrations of neighborhood retail primarily along Bedford Avenue. Zoning across the area includes mixed-use districts M-one-two-R-six, M-one-four-R-six-A, the C-two-three commercial overlay, and non-residential M-three-one. Along the waterfront, both south and north of the Domino site, there are several large waterfront parcels that contain residential towers with waterfront public access, while other waterfront parcels maintain industrial and utility operations. Three blocks north of Domino is the two thousand and five Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning area, which introduced a mix of R-eight, R-six, and C-two-four overlay zoning and a waterfront access plan to permit residential and commercial uses and facilitate waterfront public access. This project area is well-served by public transit with access to the J, M, Z, and L subway lines within one-half mile of the site, and additionally, multiple bus lines that stop in and around the Domino area and provide connections to points north in Brooklyn as well as Queens and Manhattan. Next slide. The Domino Sugar site has been the subject of multiple development proposals and land use actions since the two thousand and seven landmark designation of the refinery building. In July twenty-ten, a ULEP process was completed by the site's previous owner that rezoned the area from M-three-one to C-six-two, R-six, and R-eight districts. A series of additional approvals would have facilitated the development of residential, office, retail, community facility, and public open space across the site. However, the prior owner did not redevelop as planned and sold the properties. Then in March twenty-fourteen, the current owner completed ULEP approvals to facilitate the existing large-scale general development. These actions include special permits and authorizations to facilitate development of four new buildings and adaptive reuse of the refinery building. The approved actions allow for approximately two-point-nine million square feet of floor area, including two thousand three hundred homes, one hundred forty-four thousand square feet of community facility, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand square feet of commercial space, and public open space, including a waterfront public access area. And those twenty-fourteen approvals included a special permit, C-one-four-oh-one-three-two-ZSK, which is the subject of the current request for minor modification. So through that special permit, the CPC allowed transfer of floor area. So through that special permit, the C P C allowed transfer of floor area among the zoning lots across the large-scale development, as well as modification to dimensional zoning requirements, including height, setback, uh, and lot coverage across the proposed buildings. Envelopes were established for each of those buildings, including the one, one that limited the height of the addition proposed to the refinery. And most recently in twenty-seventeen, the C P C approved a zoning authorization to modify planting, uh, on, uh, part of the proposed shop public walkway, uh, to, uh, allow for part of the public open space to be treated with artificial turf and place-based material. Next slide. This is the current approved site plan. Buildings A and E have completed construction, uh, they include residential and commercial space and a parking garage within building E. The buildings labeled B and D have not yet commenced construction, but are proposed to include additional residential, commercial, parking, and space for a public school. The refinery Building highlighted in the center is approved to be adaptively reused as four hundred forty-two thousand square feet of office space with a rooftop addition, uh, at a maximum height of one hundred ninety feet. And the open space shown along the waterfront Domino Park is, is complete and open to the public. Additional open space labeled Domino Square is not yet complete. Next slide, please. In the proposed site plan, as shown here, updates are made only to the refinery Lot, where the new roof shape is shown and the maximum height is increased to one hundred ninety-four feet eight inches. The proposed design change reduces the proposed refinery to approximately one, uh, three hundred thirty-two thousand square feet of floor area. Next slide. Here are the current conditions of the refinery Building, shown from Domino Park. Uh, I should note, it actually consists of three conjoined structures, the Filter House, Pan House, and Finishing House, which were constructed between eighteen eighty-one and eighteen eighty-four. The Sugar Refinery operations ended here in two thousand four, and in September two thousand seven, the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission identified the refinery Building structures as New York City landmarks. Next slide. I hear the conditions of the refinery from Kent Avenue. And as you can see from the photos, uh, interior floors and, and the rooftop are no longer present. The windows are in, in varying conditions, and the applicant has shared that changes, the changes proposed in this application are a result of site investigations that revealed significant structural concerns with the original plan, which was to join new floors to the existing walls. Next slide. These two renderings show the modifications proposed today. The glazed roof has been amended from bi-level rectangular floors to a barrel-vaulted design. Each of these designs was, uh, reviewed and approved by Landmarks Preservation Commission, and L P C issued a certificate of appropriateness for the barrel-vaulted design in October twenty-nineteen. Next slide. Here's the north-facing section, uh, the refinery under the prior approved envelope on the left and the current proposed envelope on the right. The proposed development shows a reduced total number of floors, uh, through greater floor-to-floor height, and new space, uh, between the accessible floor area and the exterior walls. Uh, together, those changes resulted in a reduced floor area compared to the previously approved design. And under the existing special permit, again shown on the left, the approved addition is limited to the bounds of that diagonal hatched area, uh, which has a maximum zoning height of one hundred ninety feet. Under the proposed envelope on the right, the maximum height is increased to one hundred ninety-four feet eight inches to accommodate the elevation of the roof within the glass dome. Uh, and the hatched area that is shown above one hundred ninety-four feet eight inches, uh, that's mechanical space. Top mechanical space. Next slide. So the comparative elevations are provided for more context to the scale of the other Domino buildings. Here's the existing approved, uh, River Street frontage on the Domino Development, looking from the East River. Next slide. And here's the full elevation with the proposed refinery modifications incorporated. Next slide. And finally, the comparative rendering side-by-side. Next slide. So in summary, the applicant requests approval of minor modification to the existing special permit C one-four oh one-three two Z S K pertaining to the permitted envelope of the landmarked refinery Building to facilitate, to facilitate L P C-approved, uh, barrel-vaulted design illustrated here. Thanks. I am happy to take any questions.
Questions from Commissioners? Seeing on, we will then refer this item to the community board for sixty days.
Thank you.
Hey, moving on to, uh, Brooklyn pre-hearing items. Uh, the ninth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a notice of intent to acquire office space in Brooklyn Community District Sixteen. Our presenter is Anthony Grunder.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, the applicant, uh, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services proposes to acquire approximately, uh, two hundred seventy-five thousand square feet of office space in a future development, uh, located at twenty-four forty Fulton Street in order to facilitate the relocation of several programs of the Human Resources Administration, uh, H R A from their current locations at two fifty Livingston Street and two seventy-five Bergen Streets. Uh, this relocation will consolidate H R A services and bring programs, um, closer to client populations. Next slide. Uh, the project area is located in the Broadway Junction, uh, area of Brooklyn Community District Sixteen, uh, just near the border of, uh, District Five. Next slide. Uh, the project area outlined in red, twenty-four forty Fulton Street, is a, uh, approximately seventy-seven thousand square foot site with frontage on Fulton Street, then Cindron Avenue, and Herkimer Streets. Uh, the site currently contains a two-story, a one hundred ten thousand square foot brick building and a surface parking lot on the, uh, western edge of the site. The building is at least eighty percent vacant, uh, having formerly contained, uh, several community facility uses, uh, which have, uh, since relocated. The Broadway Junction area is a transit-rich location with zoning that has historically been, uh, low-density M districts. Uh, the area is characterized by parking lots, vacant lands, auto, auto-oriented uses, extensive transit infrastructure, and a few low-density warehouse uses. Um, the elevated L and J Z lines, uh, run through the area. Uh, there's also a, a large three-story M T A bus garage, um, and a rail yard, uh, just about two blocks to the east of the project area. Uh, the site is directly south of the Broadway Junction M T A subway station, uh, serving the A C, uh, J Z, and L lines, which converge at this major transit hub. Uh, this station is Brooklyn's third busiest subway station with approximately, uh, one hundred thousand daily weekday customers. Um, however, it's estimated that about ninety percent of customers use the station only to transfer. Uh, Callahan Kelly Park, directly across the street to the north, is a three-and-a-quarter acre, uh, mapped park, which is currently funded for, uh, ten million dollar reconstruction projects, um, to make major enhancements to the park's facilities. Next slide. The site is located within a C four-five D zoning district, which is a medium-density commercial district, typically mapped in regional commercial centers. Uh, this district was, was mapped in the East New York rezoning in twenty-sixteen. It's also within, uh, enhanced commercial district E C five and, uh, mandatory inclusionary housing, uh, M I H area with options one and three. Uh, the district allows commercial uses to a maximum of four point two F A R, uh, residential uses with inclusionary housing to five point six F A R, and community facility uses, uh, to four point zero F A R. Uh, this is a contextual district that has, uh, maximum base height of ninety-five feet and a total height of one hundred fifteen feet or eleven stories. Next slide. So in these photos, uh, we can see the existing conditions on the sites. Uh, in the aerial photo on the upper left, um, we see the two-story building in addition to, uh, the park and subway entrance, um, directly behind. Next slide. H R A proposes to lease approximately two hundred seventy-five thousand square feet of office space in a future development at twenty-four forty Fulton Street to relocate twelve H R A programs. Uh, twenty-four forty Fulton Street is to be a new six-story commercial building to replace the existing two-story structure. Uh, it would have approximately four hundred thousand gross square feet. Uh, this building is an as-of-rex proposal by the private property owner, uh, under the existing zoning. After construction, H R A proposes to occupy office space within the proposed building on a portion of the third floor and the entirety of floors four through six. Uh, client-facing programs to be relocated are, uh, Division of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, uh, Division of Job Support Services, H I V AIDS Services Administration, uh, Community Alternative Systems Agency, uh, Investigation Revenue and Enforcement Administration, and Adult Protective Services. Uh, H R A would also move six non-client-facing programs to the site. In total, approximately one thousand two hundred H R A employees would be, uh, relocated to this site. Uh, H R A estimates a total weekly average of approximately ninety-three hundred customer sites, uh, customer visits a week, which equates to approximately eighteen hundred, uh, daily visits. The hours of operation are approximately eight-thirty to six P M on business days, Monday through Friday, with the exception of the police operations desk, which is staffed twenty-four-seven. Next slide. Uh, the proposed action is to relocate H R A programs from two sites at, uh, two fifty Livingston Street in downtown Brooklyn and two seventy-five Bergen Street in Borum Hill to the project area at, uh, twenty-four forty Fulton Street, located in Broadway Junction. Next slide. The private developer has provided an illustrative ground floor plan. Uh, the planned building would be purpose-built for H R A needs and would include three separate lobbies. Uh, one lobby for H R A client entry on the northwest portion of the building. Uh, another lobby for H R A employee entry on the southern frontage, and there would be a third lobby, uh, which would be an entry to private commercial spaces on the second and third floors, which would most likely be, uh, private market offices. Uh, much of the ground floor would be retail spaces with frontages on, uh, Fulton, then Cindron and Herkimer. Uh, although the plan is illustrative, uh, the enhanced commercial district requires, uh, at least fifty percent of the Fulton frontage to be, uh, active commercial, retail, or service uses, uh, which does not include office space. Um, the district has certain transparency requirements and limits on, uh, lobby sizes. In the southwest corner of the site, there would be a surface parking lot with a curb cut on Herkimer. Uh, the building would provide the required three hundred and twenty-six parking spaces, and H R A's lease agreement would include an agreement to use, uh, thirty-five of the parking spaces for H R A fleet vehicles. Uh, there'd be no parking dedicated to H R A employees. Next slide. Uh, the Broadway Junction area is an extremely transit-rich location in eastern Brooklyn with access to a major subway node and, uh, the regional rail of the Long Island Railroad. Uh, this map shows the connectivity of the location to areas throughout the city. Uh, by subway, the location is within a one-hour ride from, uh, most of Brooklyn, uh, much of Manhattan as well. Uh, factoring in the Long Island Railroad, uh, travel times are lower, of course, to, uh, many areas as well. Uh, downtown Brooklyn is ten minutes away, uh, Jamaica, eight minutes. Um, by subway, Midtown Manhattan is about a half-hour transit trip. Uh, next slide. So recognizing the strategic potential of the Broadway Junction area, the city has undertaken significant planning work in the Broadway Junction area in the past, uh, ten years. In twenty-thirteen, D C P released the Sustainable Communities East New York Plan, uh, which envisioned the Broadway Junction area as a potential center of activity, particularly a commercial hub for offices and destination retail. Uh, the East New York Neighborhood Plan and rezoning followed up on the work of the Sustainable Communities Plan, uh, by rezoning a portion of the Broadway Junction area, including the project site, uh, to medium-density commercial districts, uh, while also leaving an area of M one-one, uh, in Broadway Junction for, uh, future study. A recent report released by E D C in twenty-nineteen contained a variety of recommendations, including, uh, growing Broadway Junction as a major job center, plus recommendations regarding the public realm, uh, transit improvements, and inclusive growth. Next slide. Uh, the Mayor's New York Works Plan, uh, created an office anchor strategy to use, uh, city office space as an anchor tenant in emerging markets, recognizing the importance of commercial growth, um, outside of traditional central business districts. Uh, so the plan specifically acknowledged, uh, H R A's move to East New York as an initial proposal. Uh, the R F P was released, uh, shortly after New York Works as a way to realize this goal for Broadway Junction, uh, by moving H R A office space to a site, um, to be provided by a private developer. That would include new construction of private office space and retail. Uh, the action before the commission today is a prerequisite, um, to executing the lease for, for the new H R A office space. Next slide. Uh, in conclusion, the requested action, notice of intent to acquire office space, was submitted by D C A S, uh, pursuant to Section one ninety-five of the New York City Charter to make use of the property located at twenty-four forty Fulton Street, relocating H R A offices from existing locations in downtown Brooklyn and Borum Hill. Uh, the Brooklyn Borough President submitted a letter in support of the application, noting that it is consistent with past planning work, uh, which the Borough President has participated in, and, uh, that he has consistently voiced support for moving city offices to Broadway Junction. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Uh, well, first, uh, kudos to the city and the mayor for, um, being a catalytic agent for, uh, development, uh, in this area. Uh, this is a, a transit-rich area, and, uh, uh, I think this will be a real shot in the arm, and hopefully, um, a, uh, the beginning of a, a transformation of the area. Um, I just wanted to clarify, Anthony, so will they be, will there be any other uses other than, uh, H R A in this building?
Uh, yeah, so there would be, uh, well, the ground floor retail space, uh, which is.
Yeah, aside from, I mean, commercial office space, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right, so the, um, the second and third floors would also have commercial spaces that are, that would be private commercial spaces. Um, they could be offices or retail, but the, uh, the developer, you know, has indicated those could be private market office spaces.
Um, well, uh, I'm sure H R A is looking forward to this, uh, because without knowing the prior lo, uh, existing locations, I'm sure this is a, uh, a major upgrade to, uh, from what they have now. Uh, what is the timing, uh, around the construction and, and occupancy of the building?
Uh, so the plan is for this building to be occupied by H R A in twenty-twenty-five. So it gives about five years from now, um, for occupancy.
Uh, lastly, on the graphic you showed showing the proximity of the current locations to this location, uh, did I see three dots that indicated possibly subway stops? Or did I read that wrong? How, in terms of the subway, uh, how long is it, uh, uh, assuming someone is, you know, uh, who lives in proximity to, uh, the current location in downtown Brooklyn, how much longer would it take for them to get out here than the current location?
Um, by subway, uh, it, it's more than three stops, but it, it's, you know, twenty to thirty minutes, I think. Um, on the Long Island Railroad, I think it might, you might have been looking at the, the Long Island Railroad stops, which are, it's three stops between Atlantic Terminal, um, and the East New York Station, which is, uh, about a block away from this project area.
I see. And what are the, uh, subway lines that, that run, um, is this the two and three and, or, or what?
Yeah, the, the A. Yeah, the A C comes from downtown Brooklyn, the L and the J Z service area as well, so.
Okay, I think this is a good move on the part of the city. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron Kraschad.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Knuckles actually asked one of the questions. I was curious about the timeline. One thing I noticed, I was looking on the D O B website, I noticed it was the E designation site for, I guess, hazard materials. Is there a concern with the owner delivering or keeping within that timeline with that E designation on the site?
I can have the applicant address that. They may have had conversations with the developer about that, but, you know, it would require the developer to follow the requirements of the E designation that's in place. So I, I'm assuming they've factored that into their development timeline, but I can, I can confirm.
And one last question. Do they have to deliver a temporary C O or a final C O? Is that, is that stipulated in the lease with the city?
I think D C A S could probably address that on Wednesday. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes, Commissioner Knuckles, Vice Chair Knuckles, asked one of my questions. I would just comment that, yeah, that this neighborhood is one of the better out-of-borough transit neighborhoods, as well as Domino Sugar, Bay Ridge, not so much. Thank you.
Commissioner Dweck.
I just want to pile on on the applause and hope that we see more projects like this in the Broadway Junction area, which are going to be transformative, and certainly it's within line, within line of the Borough President's vision for the area, so I applaud it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay, then we'll see this project at the public hearing on Wednesday.
All right, the tenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a U D A P designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn Community District Three. Here to present is Jesse Hirakawa.
Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners. As Ryan just said, yes, the pre-hearing review of the Cal comments. Next slide, please. This is an application by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, H P D, for an urban development action area, project designation, a U D A P, project approval and disposition for eight vacant city-owned tax lots to facilitate a construction of three residential buildings with approximately eighty-four affordable rental units. Next slide. The proposed developments are located in two clusters in the western part of the Bedford Stuyvesant neighborhood in Community District Three of Brooklyn. Broadly speaking, the project sites are in a mid-density residential neighborhood. The first cluster is located on DeKalb Avenue between Marcy Avenue and Northrend Avenue, which is an east-to-west local commercial corridor. About a mile to the south, the second cluster is located on Fulton Street between Bedford Avenue and Franklin Avenue, which is also a local commercial corridor. All sites are well-served by transit. As you can see on the map, it's along the G line and the A C line. So now we'll take a closer look at each of the clusters. Next slide. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Here, we're looking at the northern cluster, which includes sites one and two. Both are, both are along DeKalb Avenue. The area labeled Park on the side, you can see adjacent to development site two is the Crucial Pool. Sites one and two are sit, sit within the R six A district. Next slide, please. The areas surrounding the two development sites are largely mixed-use, with the two to four-story rowhouses and walk-ups. There are several six-to-seven-story apartment buildings and several community facilities. Next slide, please. Development Site One is comprised of four tax lots on DeKalb Avenue, and the lot area is approximately ninety-eight hundred square feet. Development Site Two is comprised of three tax lots with a lot area of approximately eleven thousand square feet. To the left of Development Site Two, you can see a wall right there, which is the Crucial Pool. Next slide, please. The developments, the proposed developments on these sites will both be built pursuant to the R six A zoning districts that they're in. There, there'll be seven-story residential buildings at three-point-oh F A R, rising to a base height of sixty feet and setting back seventy feet before rising to an overall fee, overall height of approximately seventy feet. Development Site One will contain thirty-seven affordable housing units, and the building will also set back approximately eight to fifteen feet to facilitate ADA ramps and landscaping for the first-floor privacy. Development Site Two contains forty-four affordable housing units. The building will also include an approximate nine-hundred-square-foot community room for the tenants on the ground floor. This building also sets back eight feet for landscaping and privacy to the first-floor residential units. Both developments will have outdoor seating area, children's playground, children's play area, and planted areas within the rear yards. Next slide. This is the second cluster, which is about one mile south of the last one, and it includes one development site. As you may see, the development site sits within the R seventy C-two-four district. Next slide, please. The third development site sits, sits on Fulton Street, and is mostly surrounded by three-to-four-story rowhouses and apartment buildings. You can also see in the bottom left, there's a new ten-story mixed-use building, which is kind of a block to the west right there. Next slide. Now we're looking at, continuing to look at Site Three, which is on the northern side of Fulton Street. It comprises of one tax lot, an approximate area of seventeen hundred square feet. And I would also like to note that when this project was certified, Commissioner Levin had a question about the adjacent lot that you could see that's for sale, and whether the developer would acquire the site. After a short conversation with H P D, they had informed me that they do, they do agree that probably having the addition of that adjacent property would probably make sense for a better building. However, after, they did make an effort to assemble the two lots, but after a six-to-eight month negotiation with the owner, ultimately the price was too high, so they were not able to acquire the land. Next slide, please. The proposed development will be a four-story, forty-eight-hundred-square-foot building, an approximate F A R of two-point-seven. The building would, will have residential space, three residential units, and approximately fourteen hundred square feet of ground-floor commercial space. The building rises to approximately forty-five feet. Next slide, please. This is, in recap, this is an application by H P D for a U D A P designation, project approval, and disposition of eight vacant city-owned tax lots to facilitate the construction of three residential buildings with approximately eighty-four affordable rental units. Next slide. And so, and E I S was conducted with H P D acting as the lead agency. The notice of completion of the E I S was issued on November eighth, two thousand nineteen. The D E I S identified significant adverse impacts related to shadows. This is actually another question that was asked during certification from Commissioner Levin about the possible shadow impacts. H P D has informed me that the shadows that are casted on, by the developments on Development Site Two onto the Crucial Pool have been reported as an unmitigated, unmitigated impact from, and so from an alternative channel chapter from the D E I S that it states that in order to result in no significant adverse impacts, the height of the building would need to be reduced to twenty-three feet and six inches, which is not financially feasible, so therefore the development of the residential building would not be feasible under this proposed alternative. Next slide. So it is unusual for E I S to be conducted on a U D A P. However, this is part of the shadow analysis that we showed that is presented over the pool. You can see that it's presented mainly during May to June, and starting at a small portion over the pool around four-thirty, growing until six P M. Also, would also like to note that the pool closes at seven P M. Next slide. Moving on to the community board recommendations. They had a hearing, the community board had a hearing, and voted on February third, with fifteen in favor, eighteen opposed to the project, and three abstained. As you may have seen in your briefing package, there was a separate letter that was appended to the recommendation stating the Brooklyn Community Board Three Housing and Land Use Committee did vote in favor of the project. The C B three chair voted in favor, along with the chair of the committee. Also, even though the district manager does not get a vote, he does support the project, or he does approve of the project. With that said, I did reach out to the district manager, who shared a little bit of information to the background, because this was all that was included in the recommendation. He did provide me some relevant information that might, that possibly influenced the community board's vote. And so, at the time of the hearing, a testimony was given by a local business owner, who previously, who previously leased the lots within Development Site One from the city through H P D, which is being used as a parking lot on the lots for, for the, for the restaurant, which is approximately three hundred feet away on Northrend and DeKalb. This, this use of commercial parking was possible through, the surface lot parking was made possible through a B S A zoning variance, which was approved in nineteen ninety-nine within the R six A zoning district. And to give you some little more brief background, in two thousand eighteen, the former leasing took legal action against the city, since the R F P was rewarded out, and it would also mention that the lease was over, so the court also found that there was no claim or cause of action, that there was neither an action nor implied contract between the city and H, or H P D with the former leasing to purchase the said lots. So the testimony which was given during the community board hearing by the former leasing may have influenced the board's votes in this. H P D can also elaborate more on this if needed during the public hearing. Next slide, please. The Brooklyn Borough President's Office also held a hearing on February twelfth. The Borough President issued different recommendations per site. Development Site One was disapproved conditions unless H P D or the DeKalb Commons H D S C, which is actually comprised of cosponsors of the Saint Nix Alliance and the Bedford Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation, they're cosponsors forming this H D S C, unless they demonstrate satisfactory resolution with regard to the former tenant's representation of investment and rights as a longstanding lease owner. After a quick conversation with the B P's office and H P D, they, they have informed me that the Bedford Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation reached out to the former tenant, and they can elaborate a little bit more on those details at the public hearing. Development Site Two was approved. Development Site Three was approved with conditions, basically suggesting that the leftover F A R from the developments on Development Site Three, that's the one, that's the thinner lot on Fulton Street, to be retained by H P D, to be sold later for affordable housing with community districts. So with some quick fact-based envelope calculations, that would mean that approximately three thousand square feet, and that they would, and technically those square, that leftover square footage would only be able to place on the adjacent lots. Next slide. That is it. Thank you. Any questions?
Jesse, just to clarify-
Yes.
-our back-of-the-envelope conversation suggested that there would be around three thousand square feet of excess development rights?
Yes.
And now we'll go to Commissioner Delo.
On Wednesday, if you could just get the information about the A M I and unit mix by property, that would be helpful.
Okay. Commissioner Ron Kraschad.
Yes, thank you. I just had a quick question with regards to Development Site Three. I know it's a four-story, three-family, do they need to provide A D A accessibility because there's multiple dwelling? If you could just confirm, because I noticed on the first-floor plan, they don't show any elevator or anything, so I'm just curious. And if they can provide the plans for the building, the upper floors?
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, Jesse, thank you for chasing down answers to some of the questions I asked at the, when this was certified. Appreciate that information. I am concerned that there doesn't seem to be any mention from the community board or the Borough President about the shadow impact. I would think this pool is a pretty substantial resource for the community, and the, the shadows do look significant during important hours of hot summer days. Has there been no discussion about that out during the public review?
To my knowledge, yeah, after talking to the, the district manager and the B P's office, no one had mentioned anything about the pool.
Did they even spot that that was in the E I S, or, I mean, I contrast this with some of the testimony we've got about the pool in Staten Island when we're doing the Bay Street rezoning. It's a different world, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I could definitely bump this to H P D and see if they could speak to that as well.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that, that folks are aware that this impact is there, and I, you know, accept that there's really nothing we can do about it, the choices between this development with a shadow or no development, so.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we'll see this project at a public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you, Jesse.
All right, moving on, the eleventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in a portion of Queens Community District One that is located in the Bronx. Our presenter is Philip Montgomery.
Hello and good afternoon. This is the Rikers Island Public Place Mapping Application that is returning for pre-hearing review. Next slide, please. The applicants, the New York City Department of Correction, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and City Council Speaker Corey Johnson, are seeking an amendment to the city map. The proposed amendment involves the establishment of a public place designation across the entirety of Rikers Island in order to facilitate the closing of the island for incarceration purposes. Next slide. Rikers Island has a C A two zoning designation and is located in the East River, in the area bounded to the north by the Hunts Point area of the Bronx, and to the south by LaGuardia Airport and the Ditmars Steinway neighborhood of Queens. While Rikers Island is geographically part of the Bronx, it is under the jurisdiction of Queens Community Board One. Next slide. Rikers Island was originally a ninety-acre island acquired by the city in the late nineteenth century. Over time, it has been expanded by landfill to its current size of approximately four-hundred-and-thirty acres. Plans for a detention center began as early as nineteen twenty-five, and the first major center was opened in the nineteen thirties. In nineteen sixty-six, the Rikers Island Bridge was constructed connecting the island to Queens. Prior to construction of the bridge, access to the island was by ferry. Rikers Island currently has ten detention centers, eight of which are in use with the capacity to house over ten thousand individuals. There are currently just over five thousand incarcerated individuals on Rikers Island and approximately sixteen hundred people in Department of Correction custody. Accessory facilities on the island include a visitor's center, laundry facilities, a bakery, and parking. Access to the island is restricted to Department of Correction authorized vehicles and the M T A-operated Q-one-hundred bus line. Next slide. Public Place is a mapping designation that dates back to the late eighteen hundreds. It designates a ci, it designates city-owned property for public use that sometimes is not known at the time the public place is established on the city map. There are at least eighty such areas on the city map, including parts of Battery Park City and the Lincoln Center. The Public Place designation would reserve Rikers Island for public purpose permitted on- under the existing C eight-two zoning. With the application as certified, the public designation, the Public Place designation would prohibit the use of Rikers Island for incarceration purposes after December the thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. However, due to the COVID pandemic, the Department of Corrections is anticipating a delay in the project that will impact the work of procurement and construction schedules and is exploring the possibilities of extending the deadline of closure for incarceration beyond twenty twenty-six. And so, the Department of Corrections will be filing a revised application prior to the City Planning Commission vote and that team will be able to further discuss at the public hearing on Wednesday. Next slide, please. So, this is the alteration map that shows the establishment of the public place on Rikers Island. Next slide, please. A future use of Rikers Island has not yet been identified at this time and any future proposals for the redevelopment of Rikers would be subject to future planning and public review processes, including separate approval and environmental reviews as necessary. Next slide, please. Queens Community Board One voted thirty-six in favor with zero opposed and one abstention to approve the application. The Bronx Borough President issued a recommendation for disapproval of the application and the Queens Borough President issued a recommendation of approval of the application with the following conditions. A, the public planning process on the future of Rikers Island should include all affected elected officials and Queens Community Board One. Next slide, please. Yes, the public planning process on the future of Rikers Island should include all affected elected officials and Queens Community Board One. And the public process to plan redevelopment should begin immediately and all stakeholders should be given a genuine, good faith effort to shape the proposed reuses to protect the community. And lastly, that all demolition debris and construction materials should be barged onto and off the island and not transported by trucks through the local community. That concludes the presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, Philip anticipated what my question would be, which was, what happens if by the end of twenty twenty-six, the four facilities planned have not been accomplished, have not been completed? So, it looks like that, that's a distinct possibility at this point, so I really want to hear what the Department of Corrections has to say about that. I also had an additional question. In the, in the write-up, I think it was in the last paragraph, it says that pending the approval of this application, there would be no further, I'm paraphrasing, commitment of, of, there would be no further incarceration of prisoners on Rikers Island? Am I approximating what it said, what it says in the write-up? And I just wanted to understand what that means.
Yes, the, the island would not be used for incarceration purposes. The Department of Corrections still could use the island in a, in a, for a public purpose that is permitted under the C eight-two zoning designation, but it would not be used for incarceration purposes.
Pending approval of this?
Yes.
So, what are they doing now?
I think it might just be a matter of language, but sure, I think what is intended is if approved, if this application is approved?
Yeah, it said pending, it said pending approval, which is, you know, it sounded to me like you, they, they couldn't use Rikers Island now for it. I mean, based on the way it was written or it stated in the, in the write-up.
I think it says with the approval of the proposed action.
With the approval?
Yeah, that's the last paragraph.
Yeah.
Of the briefing package, yes, with the approval.
Okay. My, my recollection was off. Thank you.
Commissioner Rompershot.
Yeah, thank you. Just have one question. With regards to both the Borough President and the community board concerns, do you know what actions the applicant is taking to address them, to address those concerns?
I do not and, you know, I'll let them to further discuss this on Wednesday.
Okay.
Commissioner Rompershot.
Philip, could you just quickly, what are the uses permitted under C eight-two, roughly?
C eight-two uses include auto repair shops, gas stations, offices, hotels, warehouses. Housing is not permitted in a C eight-two use.
So, do you know the rationale behind that? I mean, who decided on C eight-two?
I, I do not know the rationale behind that. That's, that's the existing zoning that I, I don't know when, when that took effect. It, it was, you know, nineteen sixty-one or earlier, but we aren't changing the, the existing zoning, we're just adding the public place designation.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, public, public space mapping comes with images of parks, not auto repair shops.
That's correct. Place is an art concept under the zoning revolution, not associated with another type of space. And obviously, the, the zoning that was found there is a relic of another time. Which is why I would think there's the expectation that any future reuse is likely to trigger the need for significant updates to the zoning.
Yeah, but I mean, the point of the application is to prevent the island being used in the future for incarceration. Can't they just say that? Do they have to bring in C eight-two?
This was considered, and this was a, an application, a joint application with the council, to be considered the most effective mechanism of precluding the incarceration.
Okay.
I have to admit, it's the first public place designation that I've been involved with, although we are all familiar with the public place designation in Gowanus on a site that is going to be used for significant open space and affordable housing and housing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wary of the law of unforeseen consequences here, that we pass something we don't quite know the implications, but.
Commissioner Rompershot, did you have your hand raised again?
Yes, I just had a quick question with regards to whether or not would the agency consider putting, in terms of definition twelve-ten, will they put public place within that, that chapter, like define it in this, in the New York City Resolution? Like the term public place?
Right. I, I, I don't believe there are any plans to define it per se, but, you know, it, it is not defined in the resolution or admin code or charter.
Other questions?
Oh, cool. I'm sorry, it's Anna Levin. Sorry, I just wanted to correct myself in the, the pending question that Commissioner Knuckles asked. There, in the briefing sheet, there is an odd use of the term pending in the second sentence. It goes on to say, "A future use of the proposed action area has not been identified at this time except for that, comma, pending approval of this action, comma, it will not be used for the detention of individuals in correctional custody." So, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Right, right to be puzzled about that sentence, but I'm not exactly sure that that's what is meant.
Thank you, colleague.
Apologies to you.
Thank you, colleague. As, as, as you, as you were speaking, I'm, I was trying to find the phrase because I was sure I had read it just the way you stated it, so thank you. I am, I'm slipping, but not as rapidly as it would appear.
And I'll, I'll note that we will, for the record, note that that word pending should be upon, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
You're quite welcome.
Okay, so we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday. Thanks, Philip.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it is clear that we're not actually mapping new C eight district here, right? Like the C eight isn't existing zoning and, and that's not part of the action.
Exactly, that's the underlying zoning, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving on to item twelve on our agenda. It's a, I'll call it a pre-hearing review of the Menida Street Historic District in Bronx Community District One. You recall that this appeared on our August, yeah, you don't have to put up the presentation production, you can take this down. We're not actually going to discuss this unless there's questions. But it disappeared on our August third review session agenda and a hearing was actually held on August fifth. Unfortunately, due to the technical issues with our streaming, we need to hold a hearing again on Wednesday and so we will do that as a formality. We do not anticipate, you know, any testimony, but if there are any questions on this, we can, we can talk about it now. Seeing none, we'll just move on. Okay. For September second, twenty twenty, staff prepared reports for the amended King's Land Homestead Landmark Designation in Queens Community District Seven and the Alexander Hamilton House, the Hamilton Grange, which is in Manhattan Districts Nine and Ten. Also scheduled for a decision on Wednesday are three seventy-five Pearl Street Authorization in Manhattan Community District One, seventy-five Cedar Terrace in Staten Island Community District Three, one oh one Circle Road in Staten Island Community District Two, and two forty-three Robinson Avenue also in Staten Island Community District Three. Do, if you have questions or comments on any of these, you raise your hand or just interrupt me. Seeing none. For post-hearing follow-up, we have fifteen ten Broadway. If there are any questions or comments on this project? Okay. And then we have Scott Solomon here to discuss for post-hearing discussion on fifty-nine oh two Borden Avenue. Scott? Here? I don't see, Scott, let me see.
He's connecting.
Yeah, he is connected. There he goes. In production, is there a, a presentation for this project? Scott, are you able to speak? Here we go.
I am, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you prompting me, I apologize. I, I don't have a, a, a presentation material.
Okay.
There were just a few questions that, that had arose that, and I was trying to clarification of a question, an answer that was given last time. Commissioners had asked about the College Point Home Depot that was used as an example of a previous relationship between a self-storage facility. The applicant had confirmed that approximately thirty percent of the units at that facility are used by small businesses. They also want to, it was just a, a quick clarification that they can expand on in a letter as well to the Commissioner prior to the vote, that the facility or the space for the proposed site at fifty-nine oh Borden Avenue would likely be used for additional parking spaces for Home Depot. They do not foresee using the space for other industrial space. The applicant had implied that they would, to, with the tenant for industrial use, the applicant has confirmed that absent approval of special permit, they would be adding new additional parking spaces. The space there is more valuable to them for parking. They also view the space, again, as not being conducive to industrial uses. It's a twenty thousand square foot footprint, rather narrow, narrow, long lot that would do not be conducive to the type of floor play that are generally used for industrial use. High carbon loading requirements would also make the space unlikely to be used for industrial use. But nevertheless, the applicant would not market the property for industrial use, absent, again, approval, could be used for additional parking that they would likely need for the site. And that was the other, the only other thing they wanted to confirm.
Commissioner Deloos.
That's an interesting statement that, that if the special permit's not approved, that they would just make this parking considering we, we heard testimony from someone that said they'd be interested in acquiring it for manufacturing use.
That person, one of the speakers did bring that up. That, that is an interest that they hold, they have made, known at the present hearing and at the public hearing. But Home Depot owns this property, they don't see it as conducive to the operation of the property, you know, that it would be not just adjacent, but the most likely building would be physically attached, other than a self-storage facility. They don't see an industrial use here conducive to them operating as a home depot retail establishment.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I, yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Deloos. I'm surprised at that and I, you know, they, I have to say that, that applicant, you know, made clear that their commitment here was to shareholders, you know, and that, that was part of the determination that led them to, you know, this use, you know, and, and why they needed this special permit, you know, so, so I, I guess, I'm, I, I feel like it might be a little bit of a ploy, quite, quite honestly. I mean, I can only take them at, at face value, but, you know, they did talk about yield here and, you know, we did hear them say at one point that no one had expressed interest in the site and they had done some sort of outreach, but then we heard from a potential manufacturing business that they had in fact reached out to them multiple times. So, there were a number of inconsistencies that for me were a real red flag. You know, I, I do think I want to say, I don't, I don't think that, you know, we want this special permit to become like, you know, the, the SoHo large-scale special permit, which is, you know, it's just a, a process they have to go through and they'll get our approval. You know, I, I think that, you know, from my perspective, I just want to say this here, that I did not think that they met the findings. You know, the community board was in unanimous opposition. I think that's meaningful in a case for a special permit. You know, we heard them say, as I stated before, that, you know, they're, they were interested in, in yield and, and uses here that would return value and that's not a land use rationale. If we're here determining a land use rationale and we apply that against the, you know, the findings, I do not think that they meet the findings.
I just want to make sure it's clear that the applicant has to meet certain considerations, the considerations for the CPC. There are distinct findings that they have to meet each one. They have addressed certain considerations that they think meet criteria for approval. It's not a, a set number of findings that they have to meet each one of them. Their considerations that they have focused on are the support of services through the self-storage facility. And the lack of access to public transit for employees of the facility. Those are two of the considerations that they've asked the Commissioner to add.
So, but to that point, you know, the response that you gave, which is about thirty percent of the storage units are used for small businesses, it becomes a judgment call as to whether they've met the threshold, since we don't have anything in the findings that would give us a, you know, a threshold for our own determination.
You're absolutely right. We, as we were passing the special permit, we realized that, given the wide variety of circumstances in which it could be applied for, that it was best to lay out considerations and you're absolutely correct, it leads it to the discretion of the, of the Commission.
So, from my perspective, I would have to vote no on this.
Commissioner Levin.
Uh, yes, I'm, I was, am I on the, um, I'm essentially in the same place here. This caused me. This caused me to revisit the very complicated discussions we had when, uh, this whole, um, piece of the text was adopted, and it, you know, I had to remind myself that the as-of-right formulation for, um, storage spaces is that it has to include ground floor industrial. And if you're gonna get the special permit, um, which relieves you of the requirement to provide any industrial space on the ground floor, you have to prove that, you have to, um, convince, that we have to be convinced, or we may, we must consider, that there's minimal demand for industrial uses in the surrounding area, and we certainly heard that, heard testimony that there is such demand, so I think we need to look into that. Um, and we have to satisfy ourselves that the site is better suited for self-storage than for industrial uses. So I don't think we can simply take the applicant's word for it, that that is the case, and what really, you know, we've, we've heard testimony on both points, and I do think we have an obligation to dig into those a little bit more ourselves. Um, and as, um, Trish Ortiz laid out, I mean, I'm really troubled by the fact that Home Depot seems to have created, um, an unusable site itself, and then said, "Look, see, there's no, it's not feasible for industrial use, so we're entitled to, um, this permit." I think that's exactly what we were worried about when we created this permit. It allows the private commercial market to, um, influence the market for industrial space. Um, and that's gonna be really a problem if those kinds of arguments prevail here. You know, because we know that the industrial users simply cannot compete with market-rate property owners, and we were trying to find a way to facilitate, um, preservation of this industrial land.
I'll certainly communicate this, and, and answer that, since this, I think, they, they, they are drafting a response to the prior questions and concerns, and which are again-
Commissioner Riner.
Yeah, I wanted to know if this property was listed on the market, and if so, for how long?
Just the footprint of, of the self-storage facility?
Yes.
Uh, so, the applicant, Home Depot bought the property, uh, it used to be, I believe in 2017, entire lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I believe it, it, it was prior to the self-storage special permit, it existed as a requirement. Uh, subsequently, uh, built, uh, printed their plans for the Home Depot. They always had this footprint for self-storage. There was no marketing of this for other uses.
Scott, as, um, the applicant is responding to the concerns that are being raised, um, I think it would be useful to address the discussions that took place with respect to the industrial users.
Yes.
Other questions? Looking at the time clock for this, we have the ability to return for another post-hearing review on this, on this matter, which I believe is warranted.
We will note that, yeah.
And is, and thanks, thanks to the commissioners for, for your questions on this. Um, any other business before the commission today?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so the review session has ended.
All right.
Thank you all, and see you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. See you Wednesday.
Thank you. See you Wednesday.